I'd like to call this Planning Commission meeting to order. It's 1:30 PM. With the, Marco, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Strange, Commissioner Strange?
Yes.
Here. Commissioner Ellison?
Here.
Commissioner Hunter?
Here.
Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner Gay?
Here.
Commissioner Stewart?
Here.
Commissioner Stockdale?
Here.
Commissioner Dewey?
Here.
Chairman Bryan?
Here. We have a full complement. Thank you. While I've got you, could you give us any verification of meetings, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The agenda for the Planning Commission regular meeting was posted in City Hall and on the City Portal on May 19th, 2025, and was sent out from the Portal on May 19th, 2025. Public notice for public hearing of minor subdivision application number 024-13 for the property located 104 Scarborough Avenue was posted in City Hall and on the City Portal on May 6, 2025. The public notice was published in the Cape Gazette on May 9th, 2025, and May 13th, 2025, and in Delaware State News on May 9th, 2025, and May 14th, 2025. Notifications specific to this project were mailed out to the property owners within 200 feet, and signage was posted on the subject property. Public notice for preliminary review of site plan review application number 1221-05, Bell Haven Hotel, was posted in City Hall and on the City Portal on May 6, 2025. The public notice was published in the Cape Gazette on May 9th, 2025, and May 13th, 2025, and in Delaware State News on May 9th, 2025, and May 14th, 2025. Notifications specific to this project were mailed out to property owners within 200 feet, and signage was posted on the subject property.
Thank you very much, and welcome. In Ann Womack's absence, thank you for stepping in. Call this meeting to order. I'd like to change the agenda, the order of the agenda if I can, to please take the building inspector's report first.
Do I have approval of minutes first?
We can do that.
Okay.
Let's have this, just go ahead and have his report, and then we'll approve it.
Okay. Who has that? Okay.
Yep. Mr. Shinko, if you could have your report at first of the meeting, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, and the public. First is what would be scheduled for next month's meeting. That obviously goes with pending on today's outcome for a few of the cases. We have agreed there will be two meetings for Planning Commission in June. June 26th, a special meeting, and June 27th, a regular meeting. The cases slotted to be heard for June 26th will be Bell Haven, Oceanside Reserve, Major Subdivision, and the introduction to code revisions to Chapter 236.
What time are those meetings? 1:30 or 2?
Both meetings start at 1:30 PM.
Thank you.
On June 27th, regular meeting, again, starting at 1:30 PM, we have slotted for the Coast Hotel, the Atlantic Crown Hotel, and 1001 Scarborough Lot Separation. With that, I just wanted to take a few minutes to share with you a bit of my vision of how I would like the department, from building and license standpoint, to handle plan reviews, both preliminarily and with regards to the permitting process for these very large-scale commercial projects. Many of you probably know, some of you may not, the Rehoboth Beach adopted building codes all come from the I-Codes, from the ICC, or what's known as the International Code Council. It's what we get all of our certifications from, and it's what we will continue to adopt in new iterations as the years progress, and as the building codes cycles. They recycle every three years, what we'll continue to adopt. And these services provide supports for plan review services, both for full-scale, comprehensive plan reviews for permitting, but also preliminary site plan review. And to assist with the continuing high functioning of the department and what is expected of us, I plan on utilizing the plan review services from the International Code Council for the permit process for these large projects, but more in speaking to what we'll deal with at Planning Commission stage in a preliminary site plan review. So there are flyers in front of you, just with some general information. I'm in talks right now with the folks over at ICC Plan Review Services. We can pick and choose as we like. What I suggest that we do, from a preliminary site plan review, is to have their services for life safety, more means of egress, which is getting in and out of a building, accessibility, and possibly foundations. I chose these three because I believe that they will offer a level of detail that is enough to at least have significant consequences for how a building could be built, but also it's general enough not to put too much strain on an applicant for what they need to submit. And so I am planning on utilizing that as, once I get through the stages of the discussions with the ICC services. And so that's what I wanted to really share with you today. I'm hoping that these services will, and these reports that are compiled, will act as a, to assist with the combined Building Inspector Wallace Montgomery reports that we already have that go over really zoning matters, maybe matters of operation, and things that are more pursuant to our local municipality, and how our town's structured. These ones will give us a better indication of just how these buildings are, if they're safe, and if they're accessible, and if, foundation-wise, it's feasible, they can be built, and it can hopefully dispel any concerns that adjacent properties may have.
Now, what's the turnaround time for when you apply or ask them to conduct a review? How long does it take them to respond?
They guarantee 20 days or less. So this is a significant thing also, and a time constraint, where it would take the Building and License Department, while we're good at our jobs, we take them seriously, we don't have the personnel for these, you know, hundreds of thousands of square feet with multiple occupancies to look over everything. And that also gives us a better time window for if an application comes in, there's a 30-day window in our code before they really can be heard. And we want to make sure that we can give comprehensive reviews in that time period, too. And it'd be very difficult without those services to give a comprehensive review of some of those issues without those services. And as I mentioned before, these are, the ICC is what, they write the codes. So they have the experts in all the different fields. They'll put their stamp on it, where, you know, we can rest assured, hopefully, there'll be some level of, you know, confidence, where if they've reviewed it, we can be certain that, at least within that scope, it's been reviewed, that it is compliant to our adopted codes, as so far as it affects site plan review.
Corey, what kind of issues would be caught up in the term accessibility? Excuse me.
Well, so accessibility starts from where someone would park, and go through that path to an accessible entrance, any accessible routes from that entrance to any of the uses in the building, and to any of the rooms used for accessible rooms. If we're talking hotels, it would be accessible rooms and accessible bathrooms. And they may make comments on things like water fountains. They would look at the widths of corridors, things that we primarily are already shown on plan sets.
Would it include accessibility for the provision of key services?
What they'll look for is in...
Like trash and things like that?
Yes. They'll go over the accessible chapters of the IBC and the ANSI standards that we've referenced before of the A1171, the 2017. We can pick and choose also which years that are to be reviewed, but they will go over that. If there's, there may be some growing pains with the first one or two as we begin to use this process, but so far, my experience with them has been fluid. They will work with us as the authority having jurisdiction and cater to what level of degree we really want to, you know, the applicants to show in these, without putting too much pressure on them to get through a site plan review. And hopefully, that'll help kind of craft the threshold between what we look for in site plan review, and then what is looked at in the permit review process.
And so you would see a separate review during the permit review process as well? A second-level review with ICC at that stage?
Absolutely, yes. And the second piece of the documents that were in front of you, the first one was a flyer. The second one is an example of what they ask for, for just a building review.
Right.
They have many other types of reviews that they do, each one having its own various other submittal document requirements.
I have a question, Corey. So they're going to interpret the plan relative to the IBC?
Yes.
I see, International Building Code. What happens if our code differs? Will they look at our code?
Yes. And yes, they've done this in other states. On their website, they reference New York State. They worked with the Building Department there to go over this New York State building codes.
All right.
That would include Delaware Energy Codes as well.
It's terrific that you've located that service.
Is this a new service they're providing, or why have we not known about it?
It's been around for some years.
Really?
But I think that probably your view time is much better now, as the ICC grows and continues to grow.
Yeah, I see, yeah, yeah. That's great.
Anyone else? Any questions?
Just a quick comment. You're cleared to go with this. This still isn't subject to review by management or the commissioners. You have permission to execute.
Is that a question? Are you questioning? You're asking?
I'm asking.
Okay.
This proposal that you have has already been cleared, and you're good to go. You're ready to start.
That's correct. With that, as a caveat, I'm still, I'm in the middle of the process of getting quotes right now. Tweaking what they want, what we want them to review, and that will affect the quote that they provide.
Yeah, I was looking strictly from the authority to go forward from our end, not from the process you're still going through.
As my law, so far, yes.
Good, great, excellent.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I think it sounds like an excellent idea, and I appreciate your finding this. When you were going over the topics that might be reviewed, you said maybe foundations, and I just wanted to encourage you to go ahead with securing these services vis-à-vis foundations, since we are, you know, we are next to the ocean, and so we have particular issues that have arisen in that context. So it would be extremely useful to have this sort of expert outside review.
Thank you. Yeah, I plan to have more conversations with their team on exactly how much detail they would like before they could be confident to give us an approved stamp, let's say. And while they normally look at core and shell drawings, what we'd look for for a site plan review is some basics on the foundations and the soils to make sure that it's feasible, it's technically feasible.
Anyone else? All right, sir, anything else from your report?
That concludes the report.
Thank you, Mr. Shinko. While I'm moving the agenda around, let's go ahead and approve minutes, please. Has everyone had an opportunity to look at the amendment, excuse me, minutes set forth on the agenda? And if so, I would like to entertain a motion for approval of executive sessions held on February 28, 2025, and March 14, 2025.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, the executive sessions held on February 28, 2025, and March 14, 2025 are approved. Minutes of the special meeting held on March 14, 2025, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
To approve. Okay, we have a motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. A special meeting held on March 14, 2025, those minutes are approved. Next is the regular meetings held on January 24, 2025, February 28, 2025, and April 11, 2025. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. A second in.
There's an echo. Good. All right, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, regular minutes of the meetings held on January 24, 2025, February 28, 2025, and April 11, 2025 are approved. Next matter is the continuation of a preliminary review of site plan review application number 0724-06 for Coast Hotel. I believe Mr. Robertson is here for the applicant.
Thank you.
And it's your opportunity, sir.
Thank you, give me one second.
This is a continuation of preliminary review.
Thank you. So I am still Vince Robertson, Parkowski here, Konswayzy, and we are here for the preliminary review, and I'm hopeful that I'm setting the tone for the rest of the meeting. I plan to be short and sweet with this application, because we've had several meetings already for the preliminary review, and I think we have it boiled down pretty much to the last couple of issues that we think we've resolved, or at least have a path forward on. And in that regard, we do appreciate the collaborative effort. There's been some good give and take on this, and frankly, some guidance for us on how you all wanted us to look at parking and ADA, for example. So with that, what I wanted to do was focus on really what I think are the remaining issues, so that we can get this to a public hearing in June. And there are the parking, and the ADA parking, and the bar area. I'm going to start with the fun one first, which is the bar area, and I am going to be brief on that, because I think, you know, we've made our position clear, the city's made its position clear with respect to that. I think we're at a point where we just have to agree to disagree on that at this stage. We feel that the code's clear, and that hotels are treated differently from restaurants, and that bars, like what's been proposed at Coast, are permitted under the code, or alternatively, not prohibited. There's been some mixing and matching within the code. You know, the city has said, well, you can't have the bar, but the city's also said that you can serve alcohol throughout the entire hotel premises. I don't find where that's necessarily anywhere in the code either, but the city's agreed that you can do that. Certainly, that runs counter to the square footage requirements that you have for bars and restaurants elsewhere in the code. So I would say that in respect to the bar, we believe that, again, it's permitted under the hotel category and definition, and what are permitted underneath that definition in a hotel structure such as this. But we also recognize that the Planning Commission has a different viewpoint on that. So what I propose for you all in consideration, really, down the line for the public hearing is this. There's a couple of alternatives to how we approach this. And one is, obviously, we hope that you'll agree with our position? No? All right, well, that didn't work. All right, well, and the second one would be that, once we get through the public hearing, excuse me, that you would approve the site plan for the hotel conditioned on either a variance or legislative change for the bar area, or that you approve the site plan for the hotel and deny the bar area. And in making those proposals, I'm not conceding that it should be denied, I'm just putting those forward as proposals.
Well, there's a third alternative, Mr. Robertson. You could take the bar out.
Well, no, that may be the fourth alternative, because I like my first one most of all. But we thought about that, and here's our concerns with this, and I think it may be some that were shared by you all the last meeting. I think there was a recognition that, at least our reading of the responses we got, was that there's a recognition that the code may not be all that clear on this. I mean, based on the back and forth, I think that's a given, perhaps. The second thing is, I think there's a recognition that several of you seem to, you know, nod your heads, that this is something that should be addressed in the code, because in the city of Rehoboth, we do, we prefer to have upscale hotels, and one of the expectations for an upscale hotel is an amenity like this. You know, if you go to nicer hotels, you know, you're not limited just to restaurant a lot of times. There's on-premises food and beverage operations that are permanent, not like, you know, a ballroom where you wheel in things. So the thought is, is that if we remove the bar from the plan and just take that out, we lose the leverage with the mayor and commissioners to pursue that. So that's the thought on going forward. And at the same time, you know, and I'm not suggesting you do this, but it's certainly an alternative, if the Planning Commission had any thoughts on that, that would be an opportunity for you to put that in the decision as well. So I just put that out there. We don't have to decide that now, but that was our approach to it, you know, just so that there's a suggested path forward for you all recognizing where we're coming from. So that's all I have to say about the bar at this point. Again, I don't want to beat that to death, because we've sent, I think, probably three or four letters at this point. The city's sent a letter. We've talked about it three or four times. I don't know what more can be said at this point. So anyhow, that's sort of where we are on that. The parking, that was one where you all had looked at and suggested, let me back up, there was no ADA parking spaces at all in Coast or when it was a sandcastle, at all. We had proposed the one additional space to go with the 10 rooms, you know, part of the new construction that we're seeking approval for. You all had suggested that we look at adding additional ADA spaces for the entire hotel. I will tell you, we were somewhat, initially, we had questions about that, because, you know, just dealing with the existing garage and what we had there. So in light of, and also, you all had concerns about making sure that we had 10 compliant spaces for the 10 new rooms. So when we looked at adding the additional ADA spaces and going out and measuring the parking spaces that are there, that I think, as Mr. Strange even said, you know, looking at where the lines are on the pavement, you all have seen the site plan that shows that there's actually 12 compliant spaces there's now. So there's nine compliant spaces, plus one compliant ADA space for the 10 new rooms, so we satisfy that, plus two totally new ADA spaces that are also 9x18 compliant, in addition to that, for the other part of the hotel. So we've met the 10 spaces for the 10 rooms, plus added two more spaces for ADA. And, I mean, you know, it comes up with 12 total. We're at 72 spaces, which is where we need to be. What we ended up doing was losing a space, because we had 73 on the plans before. Three of those came out to make the two new ones for the existing hotel, and that's in addition to the one we had, plus the 9 9x18 that we had throughout the parking lot. So really, that's the extent of my presentation. You know, at this point, I think, I think those are the last issues that we had. There was some egress and ingress questions, and we talked with Mr. Shinko about that, and we provided our information, and our team looked at that, and I think we're good there. We understand with all that, too, everything we're talking about still needs to go through the building code review for construction purposes. So at that point, too, it's going to all get reviewed with a fine-toothed code by Mr. Shinko, or if this, you know, contract gets approved by a third party. So we fully recognize that as well, so.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
I was having a hard time following the spaces that came and went. So how many total rooms do we have with the new proposed rooms?
72.
72?
Or, excuse me, 70, 70. I'm sorry, I was thinking parking spaces.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
Good, okay. I thought you were doing a little sleight of hand. I was having a hard time following, but...
No, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to suggest that, no.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. I didn't mean to suggest that you would do that purposefully.
Sorry.
Mr. Strange?
Yeah, Vince, I'm sorry, there's something I didn't catch. Sometimes you can't see the forest for the trees, and I apologize for this, because I brought up about ADA and accessibility several times, and you responded on behalf of your team, and I appreciate that. But one item that I didn't even think about, the entrance to your hotel indicates it's 6'2" and 6'6", and the ADA code requires an entrance that's 98 inches tall.
Are you talking about the entrance on the front on Rehoboth Avenue?
Beg your pardon?
No, the entrance to the parking.
Entrance to the parking lot.
Oh, okay.
And I'm not sure what the implications of that are, because technically, if somebody comes and is in a van, they can't get in your hotel to get to the spaces that are ADA compatible, and I don't know if the construction necessary falls, that you would have to do, falls under the guideline in terms of the percentage of rework is permitted under the code. So I guess I would ask both you and Corey, and I just saw this accidentally as I was going to the post office and looked across the street to your entrance, and said, holy crow, there's a problem here.
Well, the answer to that is, you know, that was all the pre-existing legal nonconforming aspects of the garage. I mean, we went back and forth with that, and it's even referenced, not, I don't think necessarily to ADA, but with respect to the garage itself, that because that's pre-existing, we're okay with that. And we're as compliant as we can be with the ADA.
Right, but the issue of, I mean, the bottom line is, the new addition that you're building, and you modified things to accommodate that, the old spaces don't apply to the new building, because it's new. And that was where we had a discussion about that, and everyone agreed with that. But the dilemma is, for that, if you accept the fact that all the old spaces are what they are, and the old entrance is what it is, the part that's one, the one new one that you added for the new section doesn't meet the new code. And I pose it as a dilemma, because I honestly don't know what the solution is.
Well, what I would suggest...
I mean, one solution is you have to rebuild the entrance, but, and if it stays under the 20% rule, you'd have to do that, but...
Yeah, what I would suggest, it sounds like, you know, that's something that our team can work out with Corey between now and hopefully the next meeting in June. I mean, not that we can't work it out between now and then, that hopefully we're on the meeting in June. I don't want to try to answer and gauge with Mr. Shinko at this point on that.
I agree, and I didn't mean to hit you cold, I just...
Well, you did.
I had no control over that, I just...
Thanks. We'll take that at advisement. Yeah, thanks.
Thank you, Corey. And Vince.
Anything else, sir?
No, not for me, no, thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
And really, it goes to Mr. Shinko. On page eight of your report, you refer to corridor 384, and I take it the issue is whether it is a dead-end corridor, which is, I assume, a term of art, and that if it would be considered to be a dead-end corridor, the length is code-compliant. So the next question is, is it a dead-end corridor?
Sure. This is, it's two things at the same time. It's both a dead-end corridor and a common path of egress. But it's, the dead-end corridor, you can't talk about that without talking about the perspective of an occupant inside a building. So for those who are in those farthest-removed rooms, I think on the third floor, which would be the king and queen suites in the back, that's their rooms, and that's where their, an occupant is expected to just stay the night. And if an emergency were to occur, their regular path of egress, of travel, would be through that corridor, and either out through an egress door, or down the other corridor to get to the stairwell. And so that's constituted as a, recognized as a common path of egress. But if someone, let's say, there was a, in the work area, they have an office space down the hall from that. If, in a fire, they accidentally went left when they should have gone right to the stairwell, then from their perspective, if they missed that egress door and go up, and went up the corridor, to them, that would, they would be trapped, and they'd have to turn back around, so it'd be a dead end. So when it's, from the perspective of the people in the king or queen suites, the common path of egress, because it's a sprinkled building, is 75 feet, and it meets code. And for the other person, the other route there, it's less than 50 feet, which is also compliant for that dead-end code, from that perspective of that person.
Okay. I tried to follow that, and I guess I'm asking what, if the question of code compliance is contingent on whether it would be considered a dead-end corridor, then what I'm asking you is, is it proper to consider the dead-end corridor, or is that not proper?
It would be to the person who was, who would be in the office. I would want to pull up a plan to show you, but it's, yes, it is considered a dead-end corridor from the perspective of someone who is at location A, but if someone's at location B, which would be in one of the back rooms, it wouldn't be considered a dead-end corridor. It's all a matter of perspective.
All right. Well, obviously, my sort of bottom-line question is whether it's code-compliant, and I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, the bottom line is, is yes. I looked into that much more deeply. It's both, whether it be labeled as a common path of egress or as a dead end, both are code-compliant with the means of egress.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Anyone else? Well, I think we're at the point of a decision whether we want to move this to a public hearing. Do I have a motion?
I'll so move.
Moved and seconded, to move this to public hearing? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? We'll see you in June.
On, I think the date was the 27th, I believe.
I believe that's right, it's Thursday.
We'll obviously check the agenda.
If it's Thursday, it's 26. I have my list right here, let me go.
Yeah, it's subject, it's subject to what happens...
I will check the agenda.
On everything else. On everything else.
Friday, the 27th, yep.
Okay. Thank you. Have a good weekend, everybody.
Okay, the next matter. Marku, can you turn up the heat? I'm beginning to believe this is a meat blocker.
You can just, it's the one right over there.
We go through this every meeting.
Actually, it's usually hot. Today, it is cold. It's usually hot.
Okay, the next matter is a public hearing of minor subdivision application number 0624-13 on the matter of the minor subdivision of the property located in R1 Residential District, lot numbers 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, and northerly portion of lot numbers 13 and 14, block 22, Sussex County Tax Map Parcel number 334-14-17.351.00 into four lots. Mr. Hutt, you're here for this matter, I believe?
And Commissioner Bryan, just as a quick reminder, I am recusing myself from this hearing as an abutting neighbor to the property, and I will be joining the audience.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Mr. Hutt, here we are.
Good afternoon. For the record, my name is David Hutt. I'm a attorney in Georgetown with the law firm of Morris James. This afternoon, I'm representing Walls Apartments LLC, the owner of the property that the chairman just introduced as the subject of this public hearing. This afternoon, as was indicated, we're here for a public hearing on a minor subdivision of what is presently one tax parcel, seeking to divide that into four lots for single-family homes. As I think everyone's aware, the property fronts on Scarborough Avenue, and as was introduced, you heard there was a number of lots referenced from the Rehoboth Heights subdivision, and while it is presently one parcel for tax parcel purposes, as was just introduced, it is actually 10 lots, 10 lots from the original Rehoboth Heights subdivision, eight full lots, and then two partial lots. You can see on the screens around the room, the area that we are talking about, the one tax parcel is highlighted in yellow. That is an older tax map, and as most of you know, and probably everybody in this room knows, the sort of the, some of the beginnings of the city Rehoboth Beach involved the Rehoboth Beach Camp Meeting Association subdivision in the 1800s. Following that was the Rehoboth Heights subdivision, which was in the early 1900s, and then, and you can even see there's a reference, it's probably too small on the screens, but then Country Club Estates is on the opposite side of Scarborough Avenue here. This block where, between Christian Street and Philadelphia Avenue, is a block that has lots from both the Rehoboth Beach Camp Meeting Association subdivision as well as the Rehoboth Heights subdivision. And as a general rule of thumb, and certainly, the Planning Commission has seen many applications where this rule of thumb doesn't bear out, but as a general rule of thumb, the lots in Rehoboth Beach Camp Meeting Association were 50 by 100 or intended to be, come as close as possible to 50 by 100. As you can see in looking at this tax map that shows the Rehoboth Heights subdivision, you can see that the, the lots in that area are 25 feet wide rather than the 50 feet wide that are in the Rehoboth Beach Camp Meeting Association. So, that's one of the primary differences. Now, of course, many of the Rehoboth Heights lots have been combined to create that 50-foot-wide lot that is common throughout Rehoboth Beach. The Rehoboth Heights subdivision, as you can see, there was the 10 lots there, and in the dotted line, that's on lots 13 and 14, you can see how extensive those lots are because of the angled nature of the block. The lots 13 and 14 that originally began on Philadelphia Street and then traveled all the way to the rear of the lots that are on Christian Street, those lots were more than 262 feet deep, so they were 20, very long and narrow lots, 25 feet wide by a little more than 260 feet in depth. Now, throughout the history of this, of course, this was the site of Walls Apartments, as most people will recognize this location. The rear portion of lots 13 and 14 was part of the Walls Apartments parcel and part of what we're looking at here this afternoon. This afternoon's application, and this is just another tax map, there's a lot of versions of tax maps out there, this is another version of the tax map, which I believe is probably a little clearer than the older one that I had on the screen before, but this shows, you can see on, along Scarborough Avenue, lots 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, and then 12, which is the triangular remaining lot that forms that 12th lot from the Rehoboth Heights subdivision. And then you can see outlined in that green box, the northern portion of lots 13 and 14 that are also part of this one unified tax parcel. The assemblage of all of these 10 lots from the Rehoboth Heights subdivision totals one large lot with 28,558 square feet, and again, was the location of the Walls Apartments. The apartment building, or motel building, as it's referred to in some drawings that you see from the city, that was raised in 2019, and the only thing that remains on the property, and we'll look at these items in a moment, on a survey, is the home on the northern property as well as a garage and a shed. Mr. Lingo, who is with me, sitting near the back of the room, is one of the members of Walls Apartments LLC, and he's certainly happy to answer any questions that you may have. He did provide me with a little history of the home that remains on the property, that is the Kenny House, and the intention is for that home to remain. As you looked at the surveys, the shed and the garage are going to be removed because otherwise they would create nonconformities with your code. The house is existing, so it doesn't create any new nonconformities, which allows the subdivision to proceed forward. Mr. Lingo also let me know that Ms. Kenny was the former history teacher that he had, so the house has additional meaning to him beyond, beyond just being a home that is on the property that he owns. As was mentioned, the purpose of this minor subdivision is to create the four lots that you can see on, on the screens around the room. Each of these lots are within the city's R1 residential zoning district. As was, as I mentioned, it does have 28,558 square feet, and the frontage along Scarborough Avenue is 219.5 feet, 53 feet. That frontage, of course, is all the existing frontage and allows for the application to easily meet the frontage requirements that each lot have at least 50 feet on a public roadway. And in fact, that is the purpose of this review this afternoon, is to look at the requirements from the city zoning code in order to create lots within the R1 zoning district. And those requirements are mentioned in section 270-22, and they boil down to three requirements. The first is what I just mentioned, the 50 feet of frontage on a road. I'm not going to read the rest of it, talks about items which are in the ocean block and such, but that's not applicable to this application. So, the first requirement is 50 feet of frontage on the street. The second requirement is an area requirement that requires a lot to have at least 5,000 square feet of area. Then the third requirement is that each of the lots be able to fully contain a 4,000-square-foot rectangle with the shortest side of the rectangle measuring 48 feet. On the images around the room, that third characteristic or requirement, rather, for those lots is shown with the red boxes. You can see they're dimensioned with the 48 feet being shown. And of course, for those who can have good eyesight, you can see that the, a portion of one of those boxes for the northernmost proposed lot actually extends outside of that lot. And intuitively, you would think that if you have more than 28,000 square feet of land and you have 219 feet of frontage, that it would be a simple matter to accomplish a four-lot subdivision that only requires 20,000 square feet of area and 200 feet of frontage. But even though this lot exceeds all of those things due to the shape, as you can see, it, it was challenged, a challenge to try to meet that third requirement from the code. That, and they, what proceeded from there was a trip to the Board of Adjustment in order to obtain a variance for that rectangular box to meet that third criteria for minimum lot dimensions, and the board did grant a variance for that, as was set forth in Mr. Shinko's memo to the board, and in fact, the board granted the same variance twice. Again, there was a concern that the variance may have expired over time, and so that decision was refreshed or re-approved, whichever word you'd like to use, by the Board of Adjustment. And so, there is a current variance that grants this application 13.06 feet, that's the deepest part of the triangle that it does not, or the triangle that you see that extends beyond the proposed boundary of the northernmost lot, and then within that triangle is 219.7 square feet. And so, the variance from the board allows for that area to not be within the lot. So, with that variance, all three of the basic requirements for these lots that are set forth in section 270-22 of the code are met. As you likely recall from the preliminary review that we had about a month, a little more than a month ago, there was a version of this subdivision that would not require the variance that was obtained from the board, and I've shown that on the screens now. As you can see, that results in the, the northernmost property being combined with several portions of those lots to create a lot that is around 11,000 square feet, more than doubles the base requirements of the lot. But as you look at that, you can see that, that's not a desirable configuration of this property for the property owner, for the neighbors who are adjacent to the property, and of course, for the city itself to have a lot that essentially sits in the rear yards of other individuals' lots that are adjacent to that. The proposed subdivision, moving back to what is proposed, does result in three 7,500-square-foot lots, having 50 feet of frontage along Scarborough Avenue. The third lot, that northernmost lot with the angled boundary line, is 6,058 square feet with 69.53 feet of frontage on Scarborough Avenue. The proposed subdivision is consistent with the purpose of the R1 Residential District in the city's code. Section 270-11 says that the purpose of the R1 district is to protect and maintain those residential areas now developed primarily with single-family detached dwellings and primarily on lots of at least 5,000 square feet. As you know, that would be a good description of this area, Rehoboth Beach. There are lots that, most of which are a little more than 5,000, particularly those that extend back from Philadelphia Street, but they are single-family dwellings primarily, and this would certainly match the nature and character of the development of this area. With that consistency, obviously, the applicant's request would be that this minor subdivision be approved. Mr. Shinko did provide a memo to the Planning Commission, which we discussed a little bit at the preliminary review meeting, and I mentioned it before, and one of the items that we discussed at that preliminary review was Mr. Shinko's reference to trees that were on, on the property. And as, I think my comment at the time was that I was going to look into Mr. Shinko's memo a little further and then try to wordsmith that a little bit. And as I did, I went through the code, of course, for the city, and as I mentioned at the last meeting, of course, the city already has requirements in the section 253 of the code, and there's a whole chapter of the code related to tree preservation, and Mr. Shinko's comments in his memo frankly summarized a lot of what is required within those requirements. And so, I didn't think that there's actually a better way to necessarily wordsmith what Mr. Shinko said, other than to say that the requirements in section 253 will apply. As, as someone seeks to put an improvement on these lots, they will have to go through that permitting process that's set forth in section 253, and that takes into account, and again, we talked about this, I talked about this at the preliminary review, it takes into account not just the location of trees and how you're going to deal with the trees, but it takes into account curb cuts, it takes into account utilities, it takes into account the off-street parking, and all of those are factored into chapter 253 and that permitting process that's set forth in the code. And that seemed like a better way to try to handle this, that concern, is that concern will, as plans are brought forth to construct improvements on these lots, they will have to go through that tree permitting process that's set forth in the code, which I think addresses the concerns that, that Mr. Shinko referenced in his memo. That concludes my presentation this afternoon, where I'm happy, as is Mr. Lingo, to answer any questions that members of the Planning Commission or staff may have.
Yeah, I have a question, but you had mentioned the, the house that's being kept on the, the first lot there, the triangular lot. So, nothing else is going to be built on that lot, is that right? You know, the only, the new construction will be on the other three lots, is that right?
That is, that is correct. As far as a new home, I don't know if there's any other improvements that might be planned to accompany that house, but as far as a home, that is correct. And I, I blew it up on the screens a little bit. The one-story frame garage would be demolished.
Right.
The shed would be demolished, and then the home would remain, and the, the goal is to renovate that home.
I see, okay, yeah, that's what I was, yeah. And so, and that's the other thing I wanted to confirm, is that there are still two structures to be demolished, correct?
That is correct, both the shed and the one-story garage.
Okay.
Mr. Shinko, are you comfortable with incorporating 253 in as far as the tree concerns?
I'm satisfied, yes.
All right. Any other questions? Yes, please.
Mr. Hutt, can you confirm just a couple items for us? The applicant paid the $3,200 fee to the city.
That is correct.
And I think most of the findings the board needs to make, you've already mentioned, but would you confirm that the consolidation of lots doesn't create any nonconformities?
That is, that is correct.
Other than the variance that was granted?
Well, two, two things I would say to that, Mr. Larson. One, it does not create any nonconformities so long as the shed and the one-story garage are removed, and, and so, other than that, it creates no new nonconformities that aren't covered by the variance from the Board of Adjustment.
Thank you.
Yeah, there, I have that already, yeah. Are there any other findings that you need to cover?
All right, this is a public hearing. Anyone from the public here to address this application? If so, please come forward, state your name, and give us your thoughts. Seeing none.
Wait.
Oh, Mr. Dewey is here. I thought I saw you earlier.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is John Dewey, resident at 105 Scarborough. As previously indicated, I've recused myself as a member of the Planning Commission as an abutting neighbor. I am speaking only as a private citizen and not as a member of any board or other commission. My partner and I bought a vacant lot at 105 Scarborough Avenue in 1996 when four properties each in a row all went up for sale at the same time. The guys that worked at the old Adriatico Restaurant, which some of you may remember, were really upset that that happened because they didn't have a place to play touch football anymore. But that was their problem. We got to build a new house, life is good. We knew when we bought those lots that we were facing the old Walls Apartments. Some people thought we were nuts for buying on that street because of those apartments, but I have to say that Ms. Walls ran a clean business, a clean property. The people who stayed there, for the most part, were often multi-generational family visitors. Parents brought their kids, and then when they were grandparents, they brought their adult children and, and the grandkids. It was just nice to have a piece of that old Rehoboth, that old family campground style right across from us. Life moves on, Ms. Walls moved on, it's time for change. The neighbor... The neighbors, I can only speak for myself, obviously, but I am not hearing any objection from any of our neighbors. We are all looking forward to what comes next. It's time for that property to be built upon and for it to regain the residential character that is important for us on Scarborough Avenue as a tree-lined residential, single-family home street. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? All right, do I have a motion?
Yes, I can do the motion. There's be some repetition here with all of the names of the lots, the numbers of the lots, because that's just part of the, the formality. But I move to approve application number 0624-13 to subdivide 104 Scarborough Avenue, comprising lots numbers five through 12 and the northern portion of lots 13 and 14, Block 22 of Rehoboth Heights subdivision, tax map parcel number 334-14.17-351.00, located within the R1 Residential District of Rehoboth Beach, Delaware, into four separate lots, each a subdivided lot and together the subdivided lots as follows. Lots number 1112 and a portion of lots number 13 and 14 becoming new lot number one, with an area of 6,058 square feet. Lot numbers nine, 10, and a portion of lot number 13 and 14 becoming new lot number two, with an area of 7,500 square feet. And lots numbers seven and eight and a portion of lots 13 and 14 becoming new lot three, with an area of 7,500 square feet. And lot numbers five and six and a portion of lot numbers 13 and 14 becoming new lot number four, with an area of 7,500 square feet, subject to the following conditions. Number one, applicant shall comply with all relevant provisions of Chapter 270 of the city zoning code, including but not limited to 270-11 and 270-21. Number two, applicant shall comply with all relevant provisions of Chapter 253 Trees of the city code, but specifically Section 253-25A2A1, where the applicant shall design and locate the proposed improvements and the demolition so as to minimize the removal of trees and make reasonable efforts to save the protected trees on the lots. Reasonable efforts shall include but not be limited to alteration of building design, alternate location of building, an erosion control plan, parking area and other impervious surfaces, water retention or drainage infrastructure, or relocation of utilities. Three, applicant shall design and construct future homes in such a way that the incorporation of the required off-street parking relative to the house placement shall minimize the impact on existing trees in a manner acceptable to the city arborist. Number four, lots 11 and 12 shall have off-street parking located on the southern side so as to not interfere with traffic conditions due to the termination of the Scarborough Avenue grass median. Five, the applicant shall cause the removal of two current structures, the shed and the garage, by completing the demolition permit application. And finally, in addition, the subdivision of the property shall be in accordance with the minor subdivision plan prepared by Foresight Services for Walls Apartments LLC for the property known as lots five through 12, northern parts of lot 13 and 14, Block 22 of Rehoboth Heights subdivision, dated June 9, 2022, including separate sheets depicting proposed subdivided lots one, two, three, and four, all as submitted as part of the application with no revisions.
All right, you've heard the motion. Is there a second?
A second.
All right. Any discussion? Let's have a roll call vote, please. I'd ask Mr. Dewey to do it, but he's out in the audience.
I can do it. Commissioner Ellison?
I'm for.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter?
Yes.
Commissioner Strange?
Yes.
Commissioner Stockdale?
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart?
Yes.
And I, Commissioner Gay votes aye, and?
Chair votes aye. The matter passes.
Okay.
Mr. Hutt, thank you for an excellent presentation.
Thank you. I'm forward to seeing that.
Yes.
Do we want to take a break before the next one?
Let's take a 10, 15-minute break. We have to get warmed up for the next matter.
Put your mouth guard in.
All right.
Yeah, I remember you saying that.
Okay, let's reconvene, please. The next matter on the agenda is the preliminary review of site plan review application number 1221-05, Bell Haven Hotel, on the matter of a site plan review for property located in the C1 Central District, Commercial District, on Wilmington Avenue. And the address of the property is 2 Rehoboth Avenue. And Mr. Forston, I believe you are here for the applicant.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I am, thank you very much.
Welcome. Good to see you.
Good afternoon, members of the Planning Commission. It is nice to be in front of you again. My name still is Richard Forston. I like the way Vince Robertson said that earlier. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, the Papa John family, and Bell Haven Investments. And with me is our project architect, Peter Filott. And then we have other members of the team to answer any questions if necessary. Last August, on August 5th, you all had issued your written decision granting preliminary plan approval subject to certain conditions. Following that, we went to the Board of Adjustment and got clarification. The Board issued its written decision on November 25th. And as part of that decision, and at our request, the Board also granted a variance to allow for the use of off-site parking at the location we had previously purchased, based on discussions with a former building inspector. So that variance, though, has allowed us, and this was one of the benefits of it. It allows, allowed us to shrink the underground parking onsite. And so we were able to pull the underground parking back 10 feet from the property lines of our two neighbors, Dr. Crowe House and the restaurant. And the Board, so we're going to have 78 spots onsite and 30 spots offsite. And the Board, I believe its decision says 105 hotel rooms, and limits us to that. So today, we're here for your preliminary review of the plan. And then we would ask that you, based on your review today, schedule us for a public hearing at your next meeting. I know you've reserved time, but obviously you still have to decide that it's ready. I'm happy to have our architect go through the plan. You've seen it in many ways. The really, the only, you know, we're back to more rooms. But it may, it may just be easier for us to answer questions, because I know you've had copies of the plans in front of you. So I'm happy to proceed either way. I do want to try to keep things short and sweet, as somebody else said earlier today, and not take up unnecessary time.
Is he going to go through the plans, or no?
Well, it's, it's your choice. I mean, I mean, I can go through all the plans. We can, we can go through the plans with you, or we can just answer questions, whichever you prefer. The big change is, it's 106 rooms, so the floor layouts have changed.
I thought it was 105 rooms.
Sorry, 105.
Okay.
And so the floor layouts have changed slightly. There's only 78 spots now underneath, and we pulled back the walls from the neighboring property lines. And then we're going to use the off-site parking for 30 additional spaces, so we meet the parking requirements. Those 30 spaces will be accessed using a valet, so we'll have valet service. There were a number of comments from the building inspector, and we responded to those comments, primarily agreeing with them, but they were for a future time in the process. I can have, I can have Peter walk through the floor plans with you, if you like, or we could just answer questions, whatever you all prefer.
What's the pleasure of the Planning Commission? I think it would be helpful to show.
Let's do that, then.
And, and for example, where is your off-site parking lot? I mean, I know, because I've read your application, but...
Well, it would also be useful to, to review particularly your first floor plan, because that probably, I would assume, has changed more than the, the floor plans for the particular rooms.
Okay, well...
For example, I noticed that the retail has gone down from, it was at a high of 26,000 square feet, and it's gone down over 25% to about 19,000 square feet. So I guess that was some of the savings to, to create the additional space, was cutting down the retail rate.
How about if I just go through the plans?
Please do.
Just to, the first plan here, this shows you the relationship of the main site at 2 Rehoboth Avenue and the off-site parking, which is on Baltimore Avenue. So, so it's really, that's, that is the, that's where the site is. It is what we had presented a few years ago, but that's the site, okay? The plan includes basically the enclosure of that, of that site. So this is the basement level here. And what you can see here is that along the northwest corner, the building is set back 10 feet, as requested by the Board of Adjustment. And also, in the sort of southeast corner, it's also, the basement is set back 10 feet. And, and so that will eliminate the, the need for underpinning, and the zone of influence for the foundation will, is, is now not impacting the adjacent structures. Along the Rehoboth Avenue and along the boardwalk, and we're back out at the property line, and along the property line to the west, the due west, where it's an empty lot, it's at the property line, and then along Wilmington Avenue, it's along the, the street property line of Wilmington Avenue. It's a really great solution to the problem. We were able to solve a couple problems of concerns of our neighbors, so that, that helped out a lot. So, in terms of the ground level, basically, we still have all of the retail along Rehoboth Avenue. So that's this here. This is all Rehoboth Avenue. Those are the angled parking of Rehoboth Avenue. We are at the, at the property line. And then the boardwalk, the retail will turn in the corner. So we have a fully activated boardwalk frontage and a fully activated Rehoboth Avenue, which is the, one of the really great things about this property, project. And then along Wilmington Avenue, we did move the entrance of the hotel towards the, the boardwalk slightly. And that, in order to do that, was so that we could combine the location of the bar and the restaurant. One of the previous concerns was that the bar was separated, the lobby bar was separated from the lobby restaurant. Now they're in the same spot, and the entrance to the hotel is actually over here, and it's closer to the water. The service entrance is in the exact same location it was, and always has been. The entry and exit to the garage is also in the exact same location as it always has been. So, you know, effectively, we've, we've kind of made the project a little more compact in terms of its uses. The second level of the property really hasn't changed. The ballroom is still in the southwest corner. There are guest rooms along the street. The pool is back in the middle of the two wings of the property, so the building really has kind of two wings. And the pool sort of sets in the middle of that courtyard there. And function space, et cetera, happens in front of the ballroom. Previously, the pre-function space was in the back of the ballroom. Now it's facing the water, and so that was another little adjustment that was made. And then the typical floor plans, basically, it's a double-loaded corridor on each of the wings, and a single-loaded on the connectors and on the end. This is the two-story space, which is included in the count for the, it's actually 11 foot 11, so it doesn't count double. And then the rooftop, there's a rooftop terrace. It's just a terrace at this point. And then, and then this is the fourth level. So there are the floor plans. And I can keep going, if you'd like. Building hasn't changed. The rooftop, similar, mechanical equipment, mechanical closures, living roofs. Elevations are very similar, almost identical. Character of the building is still reminiscent of the historic Bell Haven, or inspired by, we shall say. And then, you know, I guess maybe of note, which is probably the way this works, and in the answer to one of the questions is actually how this would work. But this slab will be thickened, and this will actually be designed like a cantilever. So this is the property line here, so the, and it's one story in this location. There is one place where it's multiple stories, but the same concept. This is how the, the property line, the garage, sets back so that the foundations of this adjacent building are not impacted by the foundation. The foundation of the building is, is down here. This is a cantilever, like a balcony. There you have it. Super exciting. Any questions?
We're happy to answer any questions. And one of the things you might have noticed in the parking garage, none of the columns are intrude in any way in any of the parking spots, so we don't have to worry about that issue anymore. That was another advantage of being able to have off-site parking.
Did you change anything on the roof at all? Nothing?
Well, we, we eliminated the rooftop venue conversation, you know, the whole, at one point we had a...
No, she's talking about the roof itself. No, we're not going to have solar panels, and we took off the planters because they were violating...
Right.
The height. So those are gone.
Okay.
But the profile of the roof is exactly the same.
Is the antenna, an antenna?
Yes.
Okay.
It was an embellishment last time we talked.
It's going to be a functioning, working antenna. It has to be.
Is it Wi-Fi?
I don't know if it'll be Wi-Fi, UHF, DHF. I mean, it'll be an antenna.
What's, Corey, what's the anta, definition of antenna in our code?
I don't think that we have one, but one that would...
We do. I don't have it in front of me, but we do.
I'll look it up.
Yeah.
Mr. Strange.
It's functionality. Yeah.
There is a definition, I think.
There is a definition, but it's, it's application is different.
Are you finding it?
There's some complicated problems.
I have it here. It's, an antenna is an apparatus designed for the purpose of emitting radio frequency radiation to be operated. We're operating from a fixed location pursuant to the FCC authorization for the provision of wireless services and any commingled information services.
So, does your antenna do that, comply with that?
It will.
It will, yes.
Mr. Strange.
Could I ask, before Mr. Strange gets started, this is a quick question for Corey. Will these plans be subject to an ICC plan review between now and when, and the public hearing? And a public hearing, assuming that the latter occurs in June, the end of June?
If, if, if that can be possible within time constraints, that's what I would like. Yes. But because I'm just in early talks with the ICC, I don't know what their parameters are of, of getting a, a report to us. But that is the aim, yes.
That would be beneficial, yeah. That would be extremely beneficial for, for the applicant and for us as well.
Well, while, while we've got you there, sir, Mr. Filott, could you talk a little bit about the off-site parking? How far away is it? How do you get there? Do you walk? Do you take a Greyhound? How do you do it?
Well, the intention is for it to be valet. So you'll pull up, get your luggage out, hand your keys to the valet. Valet will park it in the offsite. When you're ready for your car, you'll let the front desk know, hey, you know, I need my car. I'm in whatever hotel room you're in. And, and, you know, in theory, you know, by the time you get, take the elevator down and get to the lobby, the valet has brought the car around, and it's, it's waiting there for you. You might have to wait a minute. Show the location map. I mean, it's... So we're here on Rehoboth Avenue and Wilmington Avenue, and the site is on Baltimore Avenue, just up from where the new lifeguard station is going to be.
Isn't the distance measured from the entrance to the hotel? I thought it was 700 feet.
It's approximately that. I don't, I had a diagram. I didn't bring it with me. I'd taken it to the Board of Adjustment. This is what we presented to the Board, and this is what they authorized. But I can't tell you precisely what they...
Is there a drawing showing the, the layout of the parking lot? I don't, it's not in this deck, at least I didn't see it.
It's the layout of the parking lot.
Oh, okay, it's just that little one, okay, all right.
There, there's also a separate site plan submission that was made as well. But it's exactly like this, it's just a little bigger.
Okay.
But there are 30 spots. They're all, the travel lanes meet code, the, the spots all meet code. There's going to be lighting, there's going to be cameras. So for security purposes, you know, Big Brother these days is watching you everywhere. And it's amazing what those wireless things can do. And so, yeah, we will have cameras and lights at this parking lot.
Is that to be a gated parking lot? How are you, how are you going to control who else parks there?
It'll be gated.
Do we want, Corey, do you want to do, do you have his report, maybe, before we go into questions? Because there's some things in that.
Anything else, gentlemen, before we go to the building inspector?
Can I ask one thing before? Where, where is the valet go? Can you show us on the, where the...
Well, the valet will be at the hotel. We're not building something separate at the parking lot for the valet. So the keys will be kept at the hotel, the car keys will be kept at the hotel. When there's a need for somebody to get their car, then the valet will go, he'll walk the two blocks, get it, and drive it around. But we're not having someone else separately stationed at the parking lot. That's why we're having cameras and lights.
Okay, so where will the valet be located?
He'll be in the lobby, in the lobby area.
So where, where will, where will, where will a, a person coming to occupy, where will they, where will they drop off?
The valet stand is located right there. So here's the entrance to the hotel. The valet stand will be right here. That's one of the advantages, so when we move the hotel over here, we, we gain a little space, a great space for the valet. So the valet's here, the lay-by is here.
Remind me the current number of parking spaces that will have to be abandoned for the plan to create your drop-off zone and your entrance and all that.
I think we had said seven in the past.
I thought it was up to 11 in this one, or something.
Well, inclusive of the loading dock and the entrance to the garage, it's 11.
Okay, okay. So 11 current city spaces will no longer exist. Okay.
Permanently rented.
Yes, okay.
Mr. Shinko.
Could you show the diagram of the, the parking lot on Baltimore Avenue again, please?
Mike, speak into the microphone.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, there's, there's also one that's done on the Bowler diagram as well. And this one, as well as that one, doesn't completely show all the dimensions. It shows some of them, but not all of them. The other part is, it talks about typical, and with regard to the angled parking. And the way it was done, because it says typical, in engineering, that also means nominal. And when you try to do it, and it was difficult because of the scale involved, you only have about a quarter inch of play before you're non-compliant. That's unrealistic, in my opinion, for the reality of when you actually build it. The other part is, with regard to the width, and on the other diagram, which is not shown here at all, on the Bowler diagram, it shows the parking lot, and it indicates that there's going to, it's going to be fenced in per code. But when you look at the dimensions, and again, multiple dimensions are missing, but to the extent that dimensions are there, it appears to have the same problem it did two years ago when you did this diagram. You have no room left for the fences. And if you put the fences in, the rest of the parking spaces become non-compliant. Now, this all may be a function of, the drawings are insufficiently diagrammed to make a valid decision. But I'm pointing it out at the moment, there's insufficient detail to make a decision, and we need that information, and as the building inspector needs. The other part is, on that particular parking lot, there's also a requirement, which you responded to, and I was trying to find it very quickly, and I, that Mr. Filott, you responded on the 23rd, and, and I just saw this on the 20, yesterday. "The Baltimore Avenue lot will be accessible only by valet, and is not required to meet ADA parking requirements." That's incorrect, sir. It is, in fact, required to meet ADA requirements. And per the Access Board of the US, who makes those determinations, even if you have valet parking, you have to have an accessible passenger loading zone at that facility, which you do not, and you don't show it. And if you attempted to do it, it would end up impacting your spaces. So it's, you have a problem.
We had our international parking consultant review this, and that was the response we gave, we were given. So perhaps at the Planning Commission public hearing, we could have him speak.
That'd be great. You can also look up the Access Board and their decisions. And it explicitly states that, and you don't have it. You can have it, but it's going to impact that. You don't need it if, if, if you're using an off-site public parking space, but your, your space is not public, it's dedicated and excluded.
We rely on our parking consultants to give us the correct code interpretation, and that's what we've done, and that's what we've provided as an answer.
Okay, well...
Well, I mean, we do show two handicap spots, so...
I'm sorry, what?
Want to drop off, it's just...
No, I mean, we are showing two handicap spots on the site.
I, you're right, you have your handicap spots. That's what you need to have. And the way the code read, the way that the federal code reads, is that each separate parking entity has to be calculated as the number of spots individually, not totally. And I, I think you're fine there. But one of the other restrictions under the ADA, under the Access Board declaration, is if you have off-site parking, if the off-site parking is valet parking, and that valet is taking it to a public parking lot, then you, as the owner of your hotel, is not responsible for that. However, if you have the off-site parking at a property that you own, that's part of the hotel, then you're back to the other requirement that you need, which you don't have right now. And, you know, you said you had a consultant do it, and he'll have to present his data to show how he arrived at that. I'm going off the Access Board decisions and their code, and it is what it is. So I'm not, I, how that he arrived at, I have no idea.
But we'll, we'll review that and be ready to, to answer that question.
Okay. I have some other shit.
Again, do we want Corey to present first?
Yeah, I think that might make more sense.
Corey, Mr. Shinko, do you mind going ahead, sir, with your report?
Sure. Don't intend to do this report, reading it word for word, but I will pick up on a couple things as I go through and, and point out. The, the first one in our report, that where the, where the dark red text was, which is essentially some, anything new that we... essentially some, anything new that we've added versus what has already been in record, was about the bar area, and from the applicant's response to this report, we're satisfied with that. That, of course, will have to go through permanent compliance and all that, but at this stage, we're, we're, we're happy with that. The off-street parking, so this one, I only want to pull out a couple of things here that I think would be beneficial to read. When it comes to the, the International Building Code, and this is at the bottom of page five, IBC Section 1106.6 regulates accessible parking spaces in relation to total parking spaces provided, as well as accessible routes of travel to accessible entrances. The chapter really that we can only go off of, as far as the number of spaces required per total number of spaces given, must remain at the minimum of what we have here. Now, I, I'll look into a little bit more on, this is valet only, so those spaces, if they're able to accommodate someone who need, who has accessible needs, and they, that satellite lot is not intended at all for any of the occupants of the hotel to ever go in, then those spaces could be used possibly for handicap spaces, provided this, this next section of text, which is out of Section 1102 from the International Building Code under compliance, requires design of buildings and facilities that are constructed to be accessible. In accordance with the IBC and ANSI standard, the ICC A117.1, Section, A117.1, Chapter 5, General Site and Building Elements, provides regulations for accessible parking spaces. Section 502, Accessible Passenger Loading Zones, excuse me, and Accessible Passenger Loading Zone, Sections 503. If the off-site parking lot on Baltimore Avenue is to contain accessible parking spaces, these spaces shall offer substantial equivalent or greater accessibility in terms of distance from an accessible entrance, parking fee, and user convenience. So those are three things that we would look at in order for, three of the elements for, for these handicap spaces or these accessible spaces on the satellite lot. Are they, are they comparable, substantially equivalent or greater, or have greater accessibility in terms of distance from an accessible entrance, from the front doors of the, of the hotel? A parking fee, so they can't charge more for that satellite lot than they would for their underground parking garage, and user convenience, per IBC 1106.6. In addition, all off-street parking must comply with 502 and 503 of the ANSI standards, which require accessible parking spaces, accessible access aisles, and accessible vehicle pull-up spaces. If it's intended to only have the satellite lot being used for valet purposes, and, and if someone with an ailment or an accessibility need would not be accessing that satellite lot, then what we would need to see is the front entrance on Wilmington. There's got to be a way for them to get there, if they, if they have needs, to get out of their vehicle and get into the hotel. And I would want to take a closer look at the front doors and the front entrance of the hotel, because a ramp would be needed. You can't have steps for that. So if that's going to be used in lieu of an accessible loading and unloading zone in the satellite lot, then that one would have to be shown in front of Wilmington. And from what I could tell so far, it still looks like there's steps, but we can, of course, ask the applicant, that might be something to look at, to make sure that it's the same, we're, we're viewing it under the same scope as someone who uses the underground parking spaces in an accessible spot is able to wheel themselves to the elevator, to lift up and go through all the...
And are there, are there guidelines about what the size of the drop-off zone needs to be in addition to the ramp, the dimensions for the drop-off area?
Correct. That all comes in those ANSI standards.
Yeah.
And that would be also in part of the ICC purview to look at, means of egress and accessibility.
Great. Okay.
Cory, this is a handicap lift right here.
I couldn't tell that from, thank you for the clarification.
Yeah, yeah. I know, but this, you haven't been with this so long, so, but that's, that's our lift right there.
Okay. Yeah, so one other thing, we, if you could just specify that for the, for the next hearing. That is, the, the other one for the, for the, for the low, for the passenger drop-off and pickup in the satellite parking lot is more one of operational, operations and functionality, and how that could affect the zoning code. It's unclear right now if, currently, the, the satellite parking lot does not have any structures on it, and I don't think that we've seen any intent to have a, a valet service structure on it. But we just want to verify at this stage that if, if, if someone goes to come into town from out of state on a Friday to stay at the hotel, they use the valet services, that the, the valet worker will take, take the keys and drive it to the satellite lot, and, and then what? Are they, we don't know if they're, they're running on the boardwalk to get back, if they're doing a brisk jog, are they going to use an e-bike, or maybe a, a low-velocity vehicle, or I forget the exact term, like a golf cart, but it's, it's meant to be on streets that are less than 35 miles an hour, and in which case, they'd have to get a license plate and go through a state license program to get that. And so we don't, if, if that's the intent, in order to help alleviate the, the valet from, conversely, on a Sunday morning when everyone wants to leave the hotel, that's a big parking lot there with the 29 spaces, someone will take the keys and maybe either use an e-bike or a golf cart, or some, some means of that, to go from the hotel to the satellite parking lot, to then get the car, but then they'll, the, the vehicle will be left there, and they're not going to put it in the car. So will, will they hold additional vehicles in the satellite parking lot for that purpose? And what does that look like? How could that impact zoning for parking, minimum parking spaces required? That was the other point that we wanted to make note of as far as that goes. The loading and unloading berth, this one here, 27036, and as clarified in the Board of Adjustment Record of Decision issued on November 25th, 2024, permitted the satellite, excuse me, the, the loading zone, that only one was required, shown to be sized 12 foot by 48 feet to satisfy the requirement for the project. In addition to the raw space requirements for a loading dock, it must inherently provide for the maneuverability of delivery trucks into and out of the space without unreasonably impacting traffic. We reference June 2011 issue of the Journal of the National Academy of Forensic Engineers. Within this issue, a highly detailed and pertinent article titled "Forensic Engineering Analysis of Loading Dock Traffic Patterns" by Jeffrey Armstrong and Daniel Melker provide explicit guidance pertaining to the determination of maneuverability for large multi-axle trucks. What that essentially showed was, the main maneuverability is out in the road. If the loading dock is, is, is this way, and the road is 90-degree perpendicular, then the truck is going to have to maneuver out in the road, and what does that look like in comparison to the loading berth and eventually the loading dock? And the applicants did give us, and the responses here, what, I think on the page above, what that would look like. We, we gauge approximately 50 feet between the curb line and where the, on the other side of Wilmington, where the, where the parking spaces end. So that amount of street space plus the 18 feet is going to give you kind of the rough width of, of, of the maneuverability of space. This really comes down to the size of the trucks that would be used for delivery of the building. There's a whole range of sizes, and some can go as short as 15 feet and go up to 60 feet, depending on, but that also has, has height requirements, and we just touched on this to see what kind of design they would give. And what they showed on, on, on the plans above, and we can have them go back to this if we want to talk about it, was how they thought that they could access and maneuver in the street to eventually get into that loading dock where there's only 12 feet of width to work with. The, nothing to mention about consolidation of lots or signs, flood damage reduction as well, that will go through regular permitting procedures. The applicant has previously acknowledged these comments and indicated their intent to comply with the requirements. The underground structural setback, they provided the cantilever portion. I sent that over to the city's contracted engineer, and he agrees. Now, without the calculations, we can't definitively say that would go through in the permitting process, but the, the theory of the cantilever is sound, and that he agrees that it can support the load without infringing on the, the variance of the underground setback.
So is his report going to be attached as part of the documentation of this, or is he going to be here in person?
He, he is not here in person. He gave a, a written...
Report?
Yeah, feedback, which, which we have on record now.
Okay.
Stating, stating as such, that the, that the theory that is proposed is, is sound in, in his determination.
Mr. Shinko, is it fair to say that you are looking forward to getting an ICC report on this project?
Yes. Right. Yes, the, the timeframe that we can get those reports in is, is far, far exceeds it, how long it would take me to do a full review of those elements.
Did his report, I heard you say it confirmed the concept in terms of support vertically for the building. Did the report comment on the setback and additional safety or comfort level that would provide to adjoining landowners?
No, it primarily spoke to the moment of a seesaw, and the, the fulcrum point being the bearing wall, and how far the cantilever section could extend, and then to, to, to counterbalance that, how far in the thickened slab would need to come. He thought that that may need to be adjusted in, in the engineering phase of it, but that the, what they proposed as that would, would be enough to hold the, the weight in that cantilever section.
Thank you.
The proposal is a cantilever conceptually, but the actual dimensions of it have not been specified. Is that correct?
That's correct. The dimensions in both thickness and, and length and, and then the forces...
That may have, may or may, may or may not have any material impact on the scale of what's the current heights that are dimensioned right now for the first floor.
Correct. This is, this is going back to that, using the ICC services, why I think that foundations are a key element in addition to accessibility and means of egress.
Now, I have a question related to that. In your report, you indicated the documents you referred to, but one you didn't mention was the Hillis Karnes GeoThermal Engineering Study dated April 1st, 2022. Is that just because you didn't refer to it, or you didn't have it, or you weren't aware of it?
I, it was a, it was probably an oversight on my, I, I haven't seen that document yet. And I relied on what I had in, in my records, and I'll go back and, and look, but that's what I imagine something that I would submit to the ICC as well.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, in fact, that's critically important, because it, it states the minimum requirements. It's the only thing we have in the public record that was submitted by the applicant. And some of the requirements in there, even with this new design, can't be achieved. And that's, that's my concern as an engineer. And that relates to whether the cantilever is good, bad, or indifferent, is the floor, the casting of the concrete floor still has problems, because what's required for a safety factor of 1.5 still is going into the neighbor's property, which you can't do, period. Now, there's an easy solution for that, that in fact, I won't go into the solution, because I'm not being paid to go up with the solutions, but they could actually increase the size of their parking garage and not have to take it in 10 feet, and would simplify a lot of what they're doing, and also solve some other problems they have. But that's their decision. It just, it...
Mr. Chair, may I just respond briefly?
Yes.
I mean, I appreciate Mr. Strange's comments. I appreciate these questions. This is a site plan review? I mean, and a lot of what Mr. Strange has been mentioning is all going to be stuff that gets reviewed when we do actual construction drawings, which we will do once we have a site plan that we want to build. So, I mean, again, we're just, this is just one step in, in a process, and we're going to have to come back with engineer drawings, and if they don't meet the ICC code, if they don't meet the building code, then we'll have to come back perhaps for a site plan review or do something else. But, but we're here for site plan right now, and so I don't want to debate, because I'm not ready to debate. We don't have any engineers, because it hasn't been designed.
I agree. This is really a courtesy to let you know...
We're aware.
...ask the observations, and it, what, they're not just negatives, it's also, it could benefit you from doing it, and that's what I'm trying to do.
Look, I, Mr. Strange, your heart is always in the right place, I think, so I appreciate that.
Cory, you left, you had a couple more things here, right? I think you left off with the second floor area.
After that is the second floor service area behind the ballroom on the second floor. That was, there was no indication of what that would be used for. And again, on, on, on the clouded response, that was, that's a corridor and hotel storage space is what was, was shown. And maybe the applicant can, can show that, but that's what, we wanted to see what was, what that would be used for, rather than an assembly purpose. It's, it's corridor and, and low-hazard storage. City engineer stands, stands by with, you know, additional Public Works comments, which will be addressed in the future, and that essentially concludes the report.
Okay. I have one question about, on the off-site parking lot. Did you look at the, the fact that the fence or any other screening that they might do per code would affect the size of those parking spaces? Did you look at that? Because that's been a problem for a couple of years, ever since they first had that lot, that was an issue.
I think, I think that would be something that would be great for them to address after this, moving forward, now that they know they can get us the, the thickness of the material and how that relates to the dimensions.
The specific, yeah, the specifics. Okay. Yeah. Okay.
Also, isn't there an operational question? You have a valet stand, you have presumably one valet going to get cars and taking people back and forth.
Yeah, that goes back to that functionality of the satellite...
What if 15 people want to leave at once?
Satellite parking. I think out of everything, that was what was probably one of the biggest red items that we, of concern. Will they be able to use it and operate it in a way that won't impact the number of off-street parking spaces that they, you know, that they're required to have? Because right now, there's no, there's no accessory building, no storage builder, not storage, but a valet building inside there to, to house someone or a space where they'd want to keep some kind of vehicles that could go back and forth. Go back to a Sunday morning where everyone wants to leave, they'll get the keys for the vehicle to go out to get the, the car. They'll drive maybe a, a golf cart or an e-bike, something like that, to the satellite lot. They'll have to leave it there. If it's only one person going out, they'll get the vehicle, drive it back, and now the vehicle's left out there, and they can't use it. So they, they can, when they go to get the next person's keys, they'll either have to walk there and leave the vehicle there. It's good for a one-time use, unless you can get two people to go out. They'll both go out, one person will drive the vehicle back, the, the patron's vehicle back, while the other person follows them with the e-bike or the, or the, or the golf cart, and then they can use that golf cart or e-bike again to go back out and go back and forth, to have a two-person one. We just wanted to see maybe what some of those operations looked like to, to get verification that it wouldn't impact the, the number of parking spaces in the satellite lot.
And also, is there adequate room to park multiple vehicles? Let's say, let's say they send a whole handful of valets to bring back 10 cars at once. Where are they going to park them in front of the hotel?
Well, that's what the drop-off zone is for, but I, I just want to make...
Is the drop-off big enough? I understand you can have a drop-off, but it might be one car.
You can drop off in the basement, too, so not to block traffic down below.
Okay.
Right.
You have access to the basement.
Right. And, and I was going to say, look, we want our guests to have an excellent experience. This is going to be a, a nice, high-end hotel. And so I imagine that staffing levels will vary depending on the season, depending on if it's Sunday afternoon and people are, you know, there's a group of people now wanting their cars versus, you know, the middle of December or the middle of February, when it may be the case that we're not even using the off-site parking, because the hotel, unfortunately, you'd like it to be filled year-round, but it may not be filled year-round. So some of this is going to be staffing based on demand, and when, you know, most people are checking in, and when most people are checking out, you're going to have more employees, not just for valet, but also for the lobby itself. I mean, it's going to vary depending on the season and the time of the week. But our goal here is to have a good customer experience, and we don't want customers complaining about anything. So I just wanted to make that point here.
And you might also, while you're thinking about that, also consider, what if you have a whole lot of guests checking in at once? Where on Wilmington are the, at the drop-off zone for the car, where, where's, where do they park all that?
Their stuff? You mean their luggage?
No. Where do they put the cars?
Oh, well, I mean, first off...
Let's say 10 people want to check in. You got 10 cars. You got one valet, maybe two. How does that work?
Well, you, as I think Peter just...
Well, as I think Peter just said, you know, we'll be able to stack some of the cars downstairs, assuming the downstairs garage is completely full and there's no room down there. I think that's what you'd have to do if there was a sudden crush of everybody arriving at the same time. And those are the good kind of problems to have and we'll work through. I mean, I mean that because that means there's activity, it means there's customers. And I don't mean to be flip in saying that. But again, our goal here is to have a good customer experience. We do not want to have people sitting there stilling because no one has addressed their car yet.
Anyone else? Yes, Mr.?
Just one quick one is really a courtesy. You show a stairwell coming up from the basement near the entry area in the basement. It doesn't connect anything on the first floor. So it's just a mistake.
We'll correct that for the public here.
Just pointing it out to make it easy.
Thank you for pointing, yeah, no, as I say, your heart's in the right place. Thank you for pointing that out.
All right. Anyone else? So, Mr. Shinko, you can apply for an ICC evaluation? A report?
Yes, that's ongoing.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, I have a question and maybe our attorney needs to answer this. We do everything in public session, but if, for example, I have a list of questions that would facilitate what the building inspector wishes to do with the ICC, am I allowed to submit them to him or I can't do that? I just have to wait and whatever comes out, comes out and then we'll go over it.
We can probably get a clean set of questions over to them and put it in the public record.
Okay. I'll draft that for you to do that.
Can I get a bit of clarification on, everyone's talking about ICC. I had understood it, but I apologize, maybe I misunderstood, that the ICC work was primarily going to be designed to address building code issues and the international codes that have been promulgated, not necess, the ICC review isn't for site plans. I mean.
Yes, it is.
It's not, it is.
They offer multiple services and one of those services is for preliminary plan approval before construction documents have actually been able to take effect. So what this.
It's not based on any ICC code. That's just based on the town's code then, correct?
This would be what the department would use as one of the tools to ensure that the building is one feasible, to the extent it can be shown in a site plan review. And the other two ones are accessibility and means of egress. Because those ones are detailed enough where we want to see what that looks like, but it's also to make sure you don't have to move a stairwell because you have, you have the passive egress at too far. And they can do it in a much faster time than I could, I could review it in. And if that can be done in two weeks, that's what, those are the few things that I plan on having them look at without getting into actual construction specifications as far as a whole building review.
Well, so look, my reaction is obviously, at the end of the day, it's up to the planning commission. We submitted this plan in January. We didn't get a comment letter for months. And as I think the commission knows and certainly the town knows, I mean, time is of the essence for us to meet certain deadlines.
I understand, but you know, when all else fails, blaming the planning commission seems to be the mantra. And that's just not correct in this situation.
No, I'm not blaming you and I want to be clear about that.
Well, sir, I've heard that repeatedly. And thank you, thank you, sir, and I appreciate your comments. All right. Anyone else have any thoughts?
So then, does it look like we would be able to get some ICC comments by the June 8 meeting on June 26th or whenever?
I'm, they reached out to me earlier this morning.
Yeah.
That they were in receipt with what I gave them, with what we have on record already. But they need, we need to have another conversation because they need to know what I intend, what I would like them to look at as far as my department is concerned with. So it's going to be tailored to just what I think would be appropriate for the planning commissions, mostly the things that we can see with what the plans already show, essentially.
Right.
All right.
So it sounds like we have some open issues, but we don't know for sure if we'll have the ICC comments by then.
So is there anyone here that thinks we should move this forward or should do anything other than continue it for a continued preliminary review?
Mike?
I just wanted to ask one question. It's really a clarification, but that review is not to impose new requirements, the ICC review.
No, no, not new requirements, things that are, things that can be looked at, at what the plans already show, essentially.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to say, Rehoboth is different in a lot of ways. One of the ways you're different is you have a two-meeting process for site plans as compared to a lot of other jurisdictions. I would ask that we schedule this for the public hearing in June, but if we get to that public hearing in June and you're not satisfied, you can continue the public hearing. But if we're able to get the comments from ICC and satisfactorily address any other issues that are out there as part of that planning commission, as part of that public hearing in June, then I don't see why you couldn't grant us that, have the preliminary hearing and grant us preliminary plan approval at that June meeting.
Seems like it's a compressed time schedule since we don't know exactly when the ICC report will be back.
And there's some other open issues.
Yeah.
If we, if we hold it on the date that Mr. Forston's requested, we still have the ability to extend it.
Yes.
So that, I mean, at least it gets the ball rolling and we've done that in the past.
I have a question for our attorney. My understanding, and I could be wrong, is that the plan that goes to public hearing is supposed to be more or less final. And the idea of going to public hearing on a plan that is still a work in progress with the idea that, well, maybe it will become final sometime either during the public hearing, subsequently, whatever. That's my question in terms of the public hearing is supposed to be, as I understand it, on what purports to be a final plan for the public to react to.
Well, right, I think it would be on the plan that's been submitted.
Okay. Submitted now.
Right, I mean, do you plan to submit?
The only notes that I have, there's a stairwell that needs to be added. I submit that is not a reason not to move this forward to planning commission hearing. There was questions about fence material or fencing and with the fencing on the parking lot. I don't think that's a reason not to submit this forward to a public hearing. And there was a question about ADA and do you need a drop-off zone there or not? You know, again, my understanding is since this is totally, this is not for the public at all. I mean, no guests are driving their cars to this parking lot. No one is unloading at that parking lot, whether they're handicapped or not handicapped. Then that's why we don't believe there's a loading zone. But we'll clarify that at the public hearing and we can have someone testify to that. But we're not making any substantive changes to the plan. For all intents and purposes, this is the plan. And so again, I would ask that we schedule this for the public hearing. And if we get to the public hearing and you all aren't comfortable, of course you can continue it. But I'm an optimist. Give us some hope here. Time is money. And just telling us today, sorry, we think the ICC may say something in the next two weeks or three weeks, they may come back and say, yeah, this is fine by us. I mean, it's a good site plan, but that's all it is. Because we know there's a lot of engineering that they will have to review, but we're not doing those drawings until we get a site plan approved. That's all we're asking for.
Members of the commissioners, is there a motion to move this to public hearing?
I move this to, for public hearing.
Is there a second?
I second.
Yes. You know, that's a great point. Public comment. Please come forward.
Dr. Trejos, are these in the public record?
Yes, that'll be in the public record.
Thank you.
My name is Dr. Michael Trejos. I am the property, co-owner of the properties located at 7 through 15 South Boardwalk and 1 Wilmington Avenue. I am commenting here on my behalf and at the, at the request of Allison Blythe, that I'm also speaking on her behalf at the same time. I think it's important that, I just want to go back a moment here and what you have before you. Pursuant to the joint letter submitted by legal councils to the Bellhaven Investment and the Rehoboth Beach Planning Commission entitled stipulation that occurred on August 5th of 2024, it kept in full force and effect conditions E and F of the original planning commission's notice of decision report in which it stated that an independent qualified structural geotechnical engineer and an independent qualified floodplain expert were to be consulted. It has been nine months, nine months, and there has been no such independent engineers consulted or brought on this case. It is therefore had to be, I had to take the initiative to do the research, to create at least a preliminary geotechnical and hydrogeological impact assessment that I feel affects the properties, i.e. the adjacent properties that we have. I want to just first begin by noting that at the Board of Adjustment Meeting, Mr. Fallat noted, was commenting about the zone of influence and the angle of repose and utilized the concept of a 45-degree angle. We need to know that pursuant to the Hillis Karnes report, we're dealing with significant sandy soils and at some point, it's literally fine sand as they bore drought, they did their core drill analysis. Pursuant to industry, that angle of repose drops to 30 to 35 degrees. When it becomes wet, it can drop even down to 10 degrees. Therefore, we have significant impact that would have on the zone of influence. Now, why am I making these comments here? Because I think, and I'm not going to read the entire report, I leave that to you all to read. It's very detailed and it has all the references to it. I just want to summarize what I believe is the important aspects of this. The adjacent slabs, because there's no drainage underneath them, make it very vulnerable to groundwater changes. The, a lowered water table can settle the sandy soils under the slabs, hence we have a subsidence risk. Monitoring piseotomers, piseometry around the site and considering temporary subslabs dewatering for the existing adjacent building may be warranted. But as a result of this, despite the 10-foot setback, underpining may, will likely still be needed to protect the neighboring concrete slabs on grade and the structures in hand. Before any new construction normally begins, it is good practice that the construction team educate adjacent owners and surrounding landowners and businesses about the type of construction activities that will take place, explain the anticipated vibration, noise levels that may be experienced and outline what measures will be implemented to minimize the risk. To this date, the Bellhaven team has not been cooperative over the past six years in working with the adjacent property owners. Experience as exemplified in the construction of the new Beach Patrol headquarters proves that informing neighbors before and during about the construction of the project and the potential effects of ongoing construction activities is often critical to avoid public complaints and legal disputes. Therefore, pursuant to what I just mentioned earlier about the independent geotechnical expert and floodplain expert, they must be consulted to properly evaluate the concerns of the proposed new Bellhaven Hotel construction effects upon the adjacent property owners and the public safety integrity of the city of Rehoboth Beach municipality sidewalks and roadways. It is also imperatively important that the adjacent property owners have input to those independent geotechnical engineer and floodplain consultants so that we can also express our view and our expertise into what's going on in order to, so that we can get this hotel built the right way. Any questions?
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Anyone from the public?
Excuse me.
While you're doing that, can I ask Corey a question? Corey, your expectation for this ICC analysis, will that assuage some of the, presuming it's a positive outcome for the Bellhaven in terms of the, that the foundation and everything is sound and it's not going to cause liquefaction of the sands around it? Because I think as a planning commissioner, I'm concerned because these buildings are on top of each other and they're old. And we've seen in the lifeguard situation that this can have ancillary impact on these buildings, especially when they share common walls. Is it your expectation that it will be addressed in that and be in place of, in the same quality and the extent of what they talk about to satisfy our sense of concern about what happens to surrounding buildings during this large project?
Well, I think before I could give an answer to that specific question, we want to make sure, and I think it reads clearly in the scope of what's asked of an applicant of the planning commission in this phase, I believe and want to verify this, that it's of the health and safety of the residents of the community. And so one of the things we'd want to make sure that it's within the purview to ask that if that's the case with those kind of circumstances, would we need to see that? And it, and it seems like that's the case here. I don't want to, you know, I don't want to speak for everyone else, but that's, that's the case. If it is the case, then what we have, I can certainly give them everything that we have on record, including the Hillis Karnes study. And what I would essentially let them do is review everything and tell me if they need to see more information. As far as getting to these types of, yes, soils is, that's one of the first things. I mean, going into the soil study is, that's, that's the first step. And that's actually in your sheet there under building review for foundations below that. Those are engineering documents, so that may be.
Be in the next, the next consultation you do with the ICC would be.
Yes, well, for sure, permitting, all of those documents would be required. I mean, they, they wouldn't get a permit unless it was approved. But at this stage, what I would be working with, with the ICC is, in trying to read the room here, is at, at what point and as to what level of detail do we need at the site plan review to not have full construction documents, because that's going to be required already in the permitting phase, but at the same time dissuade or alleviate some of the stress, or excuse me, concerns that, that the adjacent property owners have.
Corey?
So I will, I plan on working with them to find that line so that it's, it's, it's not over, we're not doing too much at this stage, but at the same time, we're addressing those concerns.
Corey, in the engineering phase with the ICC review at that level, I understand there's some question about, at the preliminary, but in the engineering phase, would that ICC review address the issues raised by Dr. Trejos?
I, yes, I mean, to an answer, yes. There's, the building code has deep foundations and shallow foundations. It has provisions of all national standards and it has the purview of the building official to ask for reports, additional reports at our discretion. And, and so with, with that being said, the soils will be looked at, the, the engineering loads will be, those tables will be looked at, the proximity with, with relation to loads as well as to fire resistance ratings and the. loads as well as to fire resistance ratings and the, and the type of construction they're doing. I know there was a question about sprinklers, they do, they do sprinkler reviews as well. That will all be looked at. But for the, for the time being, I will be trying to find a line where we can get enough information at this stage to say that this would be feasible, that would be acceptable. And of course, should it, you know, when it would be approved, you know, it could very well be a long drawn out thing to get a permit if that's the case, but that's because all of those reviews will be required at that stage.
And I apologize if this is a repeat of the questions that have already been asked, but Dr. Treos has specifically mentioned geothermal expertise and floodplain expertise. And if I remember correctly, the two of the conditions that we imposed on our approval of this project last summer were exactly a geothermal expertise and a floodplain expertise. My question is simply, is that within the skillset of the ICC consultants? Would that be the functional or engineering equivalent of those two areas?
I'll check on the geothermal. Okay, so geotechnical would be, and as far as the floodplain goes, yes, there's, there's chapters all about floodplain reduction. Those are normally done by a certified floodplain manager and, and there's special certifications for that.
I just wanted to get that on the record.
Correct.
I have a question. On page four of Dr. Treos's report, it says at the conclusion of the next to last paragraph, "Direct or indirect underpinning will likely be needed to protect the neighboring concrete slabs on grade and structures regardless of the setback." It seems to me that that goes to the issue of underpinning, which would then go to the issue of dimensions and so forth that would be relevant at the site plan stage. Is that correct?
That's one of the things that, that I'll be discussing with them. How much, what is the level of detail needed for, for, for a decision to be made? They can have a copy of this as well. We can go over that to, to, to have enough information shown without putting too much, too much on it at this phase as far as too many, too many details.
Mr. Chair, it might be helpful if we reviewed what the actual conditions were you were imposed, because I think they were slightly misrepresented by the previous speaker. We did not challenge conditions E or F that you all imposed, because we agreed with them. Look, we want to build a sound, solid hotel that is going to be here for a long, long time. That's always been Mr. Papa John's goal. He wants to recreate the ambiance, if you will, of the, of the old Belle Haven. But here's what the conditions actually say, because we were being attacked for not talking to him now. It says, "No building permits shall be issued by the city until the, until," it says that "city has to retain an independent engineer," and then it goes on to say, "No building permit shall be issued by the city until the independent structural and geotechnical engineer has reviewed and approved all final design and construction drawings." So the protection that he's asking for is there. The fact he's complaining about it now, it's too early. We don't have those drawings and we're not going to have them until we have site plan approval. And the same with the floodplain. It says the exact same thing with the floodplain. It says, "No building permit shall be issued until-"
And I think those conditions would be carried over into new approval.
Right, and they should be. And I'm not arguing with those. But it's not, now's not the time to do that, is my point. And, and so if we can't come up with the engineering solution that satisfies whoever you retain as your independent engineer, whether it's ICC or somebody else, then shame on us. We'll have to come up with another solution or we'll have to come back to you all for something different. But this is, I mean, to be complaining about it now, I think is very unfair by the person who just spoke before me. He's not a geotechnical engineer, he's not a civil engineer as far as I know, he's not a mechanical engineer, he's not an architect. And it's more of what we heard in the months leading up to your approval last year. No matter what we did, he was upset. You know, before it was, "Oh, your parking garage is coming right up to the edge of my property, that's danger, danger, danger." We found a way to alleviate that concern and it's just, I think, more of the same. But more to the point, your conditions E and F should carry over. I think they addressed the issue in a very fair way, which is to say, "You've got to demonstrate to these independent experts that your project is sound or you're not going to get a building permit." And that's not an unfair request at all. That's what you should be asking for and we're prepared to meet that. But we shouldn't be asked to meet that now when we don't even have a site plan or, or construction and engineering drawings.
Mr. Forston, I think the confusion might be that you, in your August 14th appeal, you did appeal conditions E and F and during the course of the appeal, you abandoned that portion of the appeal. So I think that may be part of the confusion.
Yeah, I only questioned whether the commission, whether it made sense for the Planning Commission to impose additional costs on the town. That was my point in that. But, but in any event, we did withdraw it. And I never questioned the premise that the project has to be sound and meet code.
I'm wondering if in terms of timing, I don't know when we have, if we have scheduled a July meeting, but I'm wondering if we gave the, you know, sort of gave Mr. Schenko and ICC a little bit more time to, you know, to consider this. And instead of waiting a month after the end of June meeting, if it could be something more like two weeks, that would, you know, cut into the delay that would be affected.
I will say I have very-
First of all, anyone else from the public wish to speak? All right, I'll close the public hearing section of the meeting. All right, go ahead, Mr. Chair.
I am so conflicted about moving it to, and I appreciate Mr. Strange's motion to do that, to move it to public hearing now for a couple of reasons. First of all, I'm very sensitive about the timing, don't want to lose time on the project, but it seems from all we've said, and you certainly acknowledge the fact that if we go to public hearing, we're likely to have more than one session of that. And we have done that with your project before. That's, that's very true. There's a, there's a long history of that.
With respect, I would hope not, but I understand.
Well, I understand, but you acknowledged it and I appreciate you doing that. So in my mind, you come out in the same place. If we can get further, I think the code is intended, and the public hearing process is intended to be the last step in the process. It's, it's where, you know, you emerge from that hearing with approvals. I also, here's the other reason I'm torn. We've just had a public hearing today and we moved another project to public hearing and both of those were in, I hate to use the word better shape, because there's nothing wrong with the plan, but that there were fewer, fewer open issues in those. So the minor subdivision went through because all of that stuff had already been addressed in previous preliminary hearings. We moved the Coast Hotel, still a couple of little minor things there, but nothing like what we have here. So I guess I'm just looking at what the real intent of the public hearing and if we have one more preliminary and we get everything done then, and then we only have one public hearing versus having two public hearings, you really come out in the same place time-wise.
Well, except that if you schedule a public hearing initially, then there is the chance, and I believe a good chance, but I'm an optimist, that we could get done at the end of June. And if you don't do that, then we're definitely on for two hearings. We've lost a month. And by the way, we're getting requirements now imposed on us that weren't imposed on the hotel across the street from us, that weren't imposed on the Coast Hotel. That is this ICC review. You've already approved this site plan with the parking garage going all the way to the property line on both sides. And yet now somehow, I mean, I've gotten this report, wasn't provided to us in advance, that's, that raises issues, many of which were already raised. You addressed that with your conditions E and F, which I thought were very fair in the sense that the city knew, you know, needs to make sure the building permit, needs to know the issues before it issues a building permit. So it's not, I mean, we've complied so far as I can tell with the site plan requirements. And so sending us through ICC, if we can do that quickly, I don't think they're going to find anything, but asking us to do additional drawings and provide more information that comes in, in the next stage, now you're imposing costs and expense and time delay that so far as I know, you've never done before and aren't required by the code. And I would just ask that we at least schedule this for a public hearing at the end of June and so that we have the possibility to get through the process.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
I am interested in your view on timing. We're all worried about timing. And for the record, I think it's important to understand that everyone on this panel wants to move this project forward in the process. So my question to you is, when we talk about this report from the ICC, Corey has been very forthright saying he will try to communicate with them further immediately and to try to set this up so we get a response as quickly as possible. We've talked about two weeks and you have talked about scheduling the meeting given that relative timeframe. What if it's four weeks or five weeks? That's, that's what bothers me. What are your thoughts on that? Because I too am torn.
Well, my thought would be that if it's five week, you know, if it comes four weeks and ICC is dragging its feet and hasn't gotten Corey anything and he's still uncomfortable, although I would hope we could make him comfortable even without ICC, then that will be your all's decision a month from now to make. Do you want to proceed or not? But my point is, if we don't schedule this for a public hearing, then there's no way we'll have the public hearing at the end of June. And I'd just as soon schedule it with the understanding that it might be continued or it might be, you know, but, but if, I mean, again, from my perspective, long range, right? This is just one step in a long journey. Until we get site plan approval, we don't start the construction drawings because we don't know what the final site plan is. Then those site plan, or those construction drawings have to get reviewed by the city and then that'll give us a cost, final cost for the project that we can go out and find financing for. We have to do demo and, you know, we'd just as soon like to do that demo this coming season if we could, right? Because the sooner we can get started, the sooner the new hotel can be in place and we don't want to lose those shops along the boardwalk if, if we can avoid it or if we do lose them for as short a time as possible. And so, you know, I mean, it's not your fault that, and I don't mean to suggest, a lot, none of this is really your all's fault in terms of how long it took the previous planning, building inspector to review things. I mean, we would submit things and wait months for his comments and we couldn't come back to you until we got those comments. So everything takes time, but if we can schedule this for the end of June, if we don't make it, so be it, I suppose. But if we, if we don't schedule it, then there's no way we can make it.
Isn't there a demolition moratorium that, I mean, I was confused when you mentioned demolition. That can't happen until whatever the date is.
But that's the point. If we don't get started on the demolition of, say, this off-season, then we've lost, we can do the construction, but we can't do the demolition. And then we'd have to wait until the fall of 2026. So we lose all that time.
But your demolition at the earliest can begin September 15th.
Right, right.
I would just preface that, that there is a 30-day public notice period before a demolition activity could commence. So if they were to actually start demolishing on the morning of September 16th, they would have submitted a demolition application that would have been approved as early as August 15th.
August, okay. All right, thank you.
Right, and, and again, this won't surprise anybody. We're not going to, we've got a demolition permit ready to file, but we're not, but, you know, it has to be approved and then you've only got so much time after it's issued to get started. So if we had filed the demolition permit last fall, I think it would have expired by now. So there's all these timing requirements that we have to meet.
Okay, the, Mr. Forston, I have one question that I think is like sort of a concrete thing. The off-site parking, if it needs to have a fence by code and it appears that your drawings don't address that, and if putting it there might logically impact the space on your property, that is the one piece that your, your plans might change, the drawings for those and the spaces and all that. Would it not be smart to sort of, in the time for you to update that piece particularly? That doesn't have to do with the ICC, that we know it's a issue with the code. Wouldn't it be smart then for us to look at those? And I'm not saying, you know, don't move forward, getting it on the calendar, but would you intend to change those drawings and address that specific issue?
Well, I think you have some discretion here. In fact, I think you've got lots of discretion in a lot of ways, but one of the things that you could require us to do, and I would have proposed to do it anyway, if we get the public hearing scheduled for June, we'll bring you that revised drawing. And in fact, we'll submit it well before that public hearing. I don't want anybody to be surprised. It's always been the intent and I suppose we should have shown it already, but whatever. I mean, there's plenty of room between the drive aisles in terms of what the minimum is required. So we could, you know, if we have to shift the parking spaces, you know, on either side a little bit closer, I think there's enough room to do that. But I don't, to me, to my way of thinking, although I am biased because I'm representing Belle Haven, but to my way of thinking, that is a rather de minimis change, assuming it works, right? I mean, if adding the fences works and doesn't cause any loss of parking or anything, then the fact we showed the fences at the public hearing, I don't think prejudices the public in any way. And, and I don't think it prejudices you, but we'll have those drawings to you well before-
But we'd like to know if it doesn't work.
Well, then, yeah.
Okay.
It does work according to work.
Okay, but that's why it's important.
No, I get that it's important.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to just add one thing. When Corey started the meeting this morning and he mentioned that he wanted to work with the ICC to help him review aspects of the building permit process, I thought that was a great idea. Like, good, because we know, you're right, these are large complicated buildings and we know it, we do them all the time. You're not so familiar and to have expertise like that is great. And, and so that's what I thought we were talking about, what he was talking about when he said the ICC team helping him, right? I'm not aware, and at the, the parts of the ICC program that you mentioned, like ADA accessibility, egress, foundations, that kind of stuff, all that stuff is only shown diagrammatically on our plans. We don't have ADA plans. We don't have, you know, there are literally, every room, every guest room has to have X number of ADA accessible guest rooms. Those are what need to be reviewed by the permit. We don't have them. We will not have them in a month. We'll have them when we submit for building permit, hopefully in November. So I don't really think that when you ask the ICC, "Hey, take a look at these preliminary plans," I'm not sure what their answer is going to be, just my gut. And, you know, maybe my colleague, my colleague next to Corey could agree. So I think this idea of talking about this ICC review process is a little bit slightly off, you know? I mean, we definitely, we really think that that's a great asset for the, for the community to have, but in this site plan review process, I'm not sure that's the right time for it. And that's all I really wanted to say.
Anyone else? Any other members of the commission?
Well, I was just going to make the comment in support of Mr. Forston's comment. They've been working on this project for five years and we haven't, okay, well, I've only, and over that time, we've never seen the same plan twice. It's always changed, sometimes for the better, sometimes for the worse technically. And I, I, I think it's appropriate because this is a very unusual project. I don't, in my 13 years, we've never had a project that's taken this long to finally get to this stage, that's gone through so many iterations. And I think the public would benefit, I think everyone benefits, if we move to the next phase. The code specifically calls out under 236-G2 to determine whether additional information is needed from the applicant or others and whether there are legal or factual issues that need clarification prior to final action by the Planning Commission. Well, the final action is going to be to approve or disprove and I think it facilitates the, let's keep the ball rolling as fast as we can, subject to all of the things that need to be analyzed and not hold it up anymore. So that's why I'm voting in favor of moving it to the next stage. And this may in fact be one that goes more than one meeting. It may go one, two, or three, whatever's necessary to get it to the finish line. And I think that's critical.
I would just like to lend my support to your comments. Michael, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
May I ask you a question?
Yes, sir. Mr. Walsh?
Mr. Walsh?
In general, but understanding that the construction drawing level of engineering calculations have not been performed yet, have there been any degree of engineering calculations or review performed to verify the concept of the foundation of the site plan as it is shown currently, in terms of floodplain requirements, structural capacity, those type of things, geotechnical concerns? And if those have been conceptually reviewed to whatever degree, is that something that could be shared to help address everybody's concerns with those perspectives at this point? Does that make sense, what I'm asking?
We can, we'll certainly share what we have. You know, we have no problem doing that. You know, I'm not sure that it's, you know, it's really going to be satisfactory, but we do know that we're dealing with, you know, a two-and-a-half-foot mat foundation. We know typical details on how that will be done. You know, we did get a note from, from the engineer saying what he thought generally what the cantilever thickness would be. And, you know, we're happy to share all that information, but it's, it may not solve all your problems, but clearly, you know, our intention is to move forward with a fully structurally sound structure that doesn't disturb any of our adjacent neighbors or harm in any way the public safety welfare.
And I guess my point is, is that if you know that you're going to have to ultimately provide these calculations for, prior to building permit issuance, how can you be sure that what you are proposing currently is going to be able to be constructed to meet those criteria without having done some proof-of-concept analysis? Specifically for geotech and floodplain?
Absolutely. We're happy to share what we have. We have a geotech report, we have a design, we have, we have a schematic, you know, basically an outline spec and a sort of, you know, an approach to the design that we're happy to share if you want.
And I guess that's the type of thing that I think we're sort of looking for, is some degree of math to show that we're, that we're all feasible, that, that you're going to be able to meet the criterion regulations that are typically addressed at that final permit issuance stage. And we recognize that the timing of all of this is unusual, but because of the complexity, the scale of what you're proposing, we need to make sure that we get it right now so that we don't issue approvals for something that is not going to work, and that in fact does perhaps create a safety issue or a structural issue for the area. So that's our concern. We just don't want to set a permit in place or an approval in place prior to seeing those calculations.
If, if in the process, even if we, what we send you what we have, and we get a permit approval, a site plan approval, and further down the road, we find out that something is different, we wouldn't go forward.
Of course.
Just because we got approval for it.
But in this case, we're trying to.
You know, this is just completely unbelievable kind of conversation, but if it had to happen, it wouldn't, it was.
But at the same time, in this approach, we're trying to protect your best interests by addressing it now and saving you time down the road.
I'll send you what we have. We have, we have.
That's, that's perfect. As a good step.
We have drawings, fairly detailed drawings that we can send you, and you can look at them, and they're not construction drawings, but there's some engineering behind them.
Yeah.
We can send them to you in the next, let's say.
That'd be very helpful.
By next Friday.
Thank you. Thank you.
We have a motion, we have a motion. Yeah, we have a motion and a second pending. Any more discussion?
Right. And I seconded, and I, and I stick with my second. I do believe that, again, we're mostly still at a conceptual stage. None of the detailed drawings have been done, and I do believe, I agree with Mike Strange, that we really need to, to move this ahead, whether it means one, two, or three public hearings. I agree with the principle that I think the public would benefit from hearing where we are and, and what's still is ahead. So I support it.
Ms. Stewart?
I just agree with, I concur. I think we ought to move it forward. I know, you didn't ask me for my vote yet, but.
Can I add one, one thing before the vote? I apologize. If motor vehicles of any kind will be used for valet services to shuffle, shuttle your valet workers to and from, if you could just put a cloud on where those vehicles would be stored?
We'll talk to you next week, and we'll go over the valet plans. As far as I'm aware, there are no plans to use any sort of motorized bike or anything. You can cut through, there's a passageway from the hotel that actually comes out on Rehoboth Avenue, and then you just go across Rehoboth Avenue, and there's an alley that gets you to the back of this parking lot. So it's actually quite close if you're, if you're walking. You have to walk fast, perhaps, but, but it's, you know, you're not being, making this big giant loop, you're not running down the boardwalk and around. So, but we'll go over that with you, and we'll show you what the, what the plan is right now. And again, you know, depending on the time of day, depending on the time of week, depending on the season, you know, you're going to have different levels of staffing for the, for the guests as they arrive.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I just want to say that I want to repeat, I am anxious to move the review process forward in terms of finalizing this site plan process. But I want to make sure we do it appropriately and that we're all satisfied with the concerns that have been raised. So I just want to drop a footnote to make sure everyone understands the discretion we have, and that that may be one, two, or three meetings. I'm interested in seeing what the ICC says about this, because I think we've heard serious concerns about issues that I know you two are worried about. I just want to all walk away from this project feeling like we have served the public well and done the right thing when we complete this preliminary site plan review.
With respect, I'm not worried, but, but I, I mean, I want to make sure that you all are comfortable, so don't get me wrong about that. But, you know, you'll recall, we had our own structural engineer come and testify before you last April or March. You know, we, we've got good quality people behind this. There's a lot of money that's going to be invested in this property when we get site plan approval, and we're not just willy-nilly doing this. I mean, so we'll sit down with the building inspector and his team, and Peter will share those things that we have. And then, you know, conditions ENF, I mean, it's got to be approved by, you know, if it's an independent person or it's ICC whoever, you need, before you issue any building permit, and we need to know. And our lenders, believe me, will make sure that this is going to be a sound, solid building.
So I take it from what you said, that were we to approve whatever the site plan is after one, two, or three, you know, sessions, and add to that approval the conditions ENF, you would have no objections to those conditions? Is that correct?
Correct.
Anyone else?
We're going to vote on it? Doing a, we doing a roll call vote on it?
Yeah. I typically don't weigh in with my thoughts, but I do think, in this instance, we have a duty to the public, and that is to ferret out, identify, and address whatever issues that might really be a problem in this project. I believe that it's unfair to the public to bring forward a document that's still, the ink isn't dry. And how, if you are a member of the public and you come, how do you know what to talk about? Or how about if you come and then the project has changed? So you've wasted your time coming to the public hearing. You've wasted all the preparation you made, because it's not the same project anymore. I think we're being rushed, and I don't know why in the world one month delay, at least one month, from June to July would be a big deal. This project, this is the sixth iteration of this project. So we've been here before.
I'd like to say I support those concerns. Mr. Forston, with all due respect, you and Mr. Fella talk consistently about doing everything for the building permit process, for issuing a building permit. If the only thing at stake with respect to your project was getting a building permit, I don't, the Planning Commission would have no role in the process. But we do have a role, and we have a responsibility, both legal and I think moral, political, to do our due diligence and to make sure that when we send a plan for public hearing, first of all, there's no presumption that it will be approved, but to send a plan to public hearing where so many questions about the basic feasibility of this project, the basic feasibility of the plan that we've talked about now for the better part of two hours, it can be billed, that it's technically feasible, whether it's a geotechnical issue, floodplain issue, whatever. I am very concerned that we would be, as Mr. Bryant points out, not doing our due diligence and performing our duties to the public as, as the Planning Commission with respect to what we are supposed, what we are charged to do and what we, in all good faith, are doing. I, I would, like you, I'd like to see this go forward, but I can see it could be a complete waste of time if, as and when we had a report from the ICC that raised some of the same issues that have been on the table since the very beginning of this, which has been mostly the relationship of the proposed project on the adjacent properties, whether you have underpinnings, you don't have underpinnings, whether you're 10 feet in from, with a setback, whether it's on the property line, whatever. And I think those are important enough questions to be reviewed and have more information on basic feasibility before I'd be ready to send a plan to public hearing.
Okay. A roll call vote, please. The motion is to move it forward to plan to public hearing.
Okay, roll call vote regarding the motion. Myself, John Dewey, I'm voting in favor. Commissioner Hunter?
I vote no.
Commissioner Strange?
I vote yes.
Commissioner Stewart?
I vote yes.
Commissioner Davis?
No.
Commissioner Ellison?
I vote yes.
Commissioner Stockdale?
I vote yes.
Commissioner Gay?
I don't do this very often, but as I said at the beginning of my comments earlier, I'm extremely torn. Therefore, I'm going to abstain.
Commissioner Bryan?
Chair votes no. The motion passes 5-2-3. So we will set it for a public hearing.
Thank you.
And we'll let you know.
Thank you. It's on for June 26th. Is that, does that give him enough time? It's on for the Thursday meeting in June 26th, right? Yeah.
Okay, June 26th.
I'm going to change the mixed-use thing. Better let them know, because they were planning to, they were planning to present it to the commissioners.
Are you going to, are you going to present the mixed-use thing now, or?
Yes.
Okay. I'll go quick.
Let him do it.
Double time, double time.
Yeah, yeah.
He's got a short PowerPoint presentation.
Yeah, yeah, right. I knew that. I just.
Okay.
Okay. I'm going to go as quickly as possible. I'm going to fly through certain elements. If anybody has questions, please flag me, tell me to slow down, ask away. Okay, so what are we doing? We're basically being charged to get together a task force to come up with mixed-use zoning regulations to insert that address a lot of the goals developed in the comprehensive development plan from the most recent process. Why are we doing it? Well, we've got a lot of space occupied in the city already. There's not a ton of room. There's a lot of opportunity for redevelopment. So you're seeing a lot of projects like the Bellhaven, like one Rehoboth, coming in with mixed uses. We need to have regulations in place that govern those uses. The 2020 CDP goes over a lot of the goals. We're looking to spur specific types of revitalization in projects. In particular, emphasize housing choice, both affordable, workforce, whatever you want to term it. We're looking to build that up while maintaining the overall aesthetic character of the city and its pedestrian street feels. Previously in 2019, you guys had a CDA, a mixed-use workshop on this that went over a lot of the concepts that we're going to get into here in a second, looking at far changes, promotion of sustainable building practices, developer incentives, et cetera. So our general schedule here, it's laid out. This is all available at the link on the agenda. I'm not going to go into detail. Suffice it to say, right now, we're in May, and we're giving you guys a presentation. We're going to ask for your comments on the main goals here to be received by June 16th so that we can get them integrated into the presentation for the Board of Commissioners, where we're going to do the same thing and ask them for their opinions. We want to make sure that you guys are supportive of the general direction that we're going. Right now, we just have big-picture things. As we move forward in the process, we're going to nail down details. We're going to develop specific texts and narrative to be inserted into the zoning code, only in Chapter 270. That is what our task is. We are not to go beyond those boundaries. So within that, what can we do? We will have all those details laid out by the end of this process, but right now, we're still making sure that you guys are supportive of the big-picture goals. So what are we actually doing? Well, again, zoning code only, Chapter 270 specifically. We're only talking about the commercially zoned districts in the city, nothing outside of those. What are these goals that we're talking about? All right, so real quickly, parking standards, building height, residential unit sizes, lot coverage, setbacks, et cetera. You can read these things. Here are some of the bigger components under those main goals. So when I say parking standards, well, how many spaces are we requiring based on the size of the, or scale of the proposed development, the use proposed, uses proposed, et cetera? Are we going to give any type of incentives to the developer for things like increased FAR if they provide specific types of parking, or, I'm sorry, are we going to reduce the number or type of parking that we require from a project if they include different types of housing options? I had that sort of backwards, sorry. How are they going to be able to share parking facilities? Is that something we want to consider? These are questions that we are coming to the task force to ask for their specific directions in how to create regulations that will spur new projects that include housing options, as well as regulate and provide for the maintenance of the character of the city of Rehoboth Beach. Hopefully, that makes sense. Again, please stop me if I, if nothing is clear. We're going to make sure for building heights and, and these specific elements, that we're not going to change any heights on anything. We're capped at 50, but we're looking at like the 42 to 50. Is there any other opportunity to, say, sustainable building practices like solar panels, green roof technologies? Is there a place for those in that area? Maybe, maybe not. But these are the type of things that we're going to be looking into in more detail. Looking at maintaining the vertical step back from the second floor. That's not going anywhere, because it really has a big impact on the street feel, the pedestrian connection to the city. It encourages people to get out on their feet, walk around, and have a good time while doing so. So we want to maintain those type of regulations, make sure that they are appropriately targeted to these projects, and that everything is clear. Developers have a clear path and clear guidance on how to develop these designs in a way that will make all of our lives easier as they come forward with these things. The unit sizes, is there a desire, an opportunity to reduce the minimum size of a residential unit, to increase the overall count of the number of units? unit to increase the overall count of the number of units available for rent or purchase within the city? Is there a desire to consider something like a dormitory-like concept where you have shared facilities like kitchens or bathrooms? It's something worth exploring so that we can, again, address the need for affordable housing in the city. Looking at lot requirements, looking at greater capacity of multifamily residential uses in the C3 perhaps. But again, here we come back to a desire to maintain the aesthetic of the city, and that is the street feel, the, the, the character of the city. And so we're going to somewhat focus on the outcome, not necessarily the minutia perhaps. And this gets into a little bit of the form-based design approach to a zoning code process, where we're not gonna explicitly call it a form-based code because that's a whole other thing, and it's complicated and expensive to develop and implement specifically within a constrained process and, and scope like we're doing here. So to the degree that we can, within the limitations that we have, we're going to look on how does this actually turn out? Is this keeping with our desired view of what the city should look like? Lot coverage, same basic stuff, yeah. What is the lot coverage to be, not just for the ground floors, but for the second, third, fourth, et cetera, when we have different use classifications from commercial on the bottom, residential, what have you on top of them?
An antenna.
I'm sorry?
Never mind.
What type of antenna?
A non-working antenna.
So there's a little gap in, in the code right now where we don't exactly specify how we calculate FAR for multifamily mixed use proposals. We wanna make sure that we're closing any gaps that exist, and that also includes, well, not, I'll get to that in a second, but we want to also use FAR as a tool to provide incentives for developers and owners to, again, incorporate housing options and other uses that the city desires and wants to increase the stock of. You know, it might seem minor, and it sort of is, but is there a way to address trash handling that gives us more space to work with for other things that we wanna see more of? And everybody's favorite, loading docks. Wouldn't it be great to have explicit details on how many loading docks you need for a combination of X square feet of commercial with Y number of housing units? That would've been handy, eliminating a lot of ambiguity and gaps. And along those lines, you know, we gotta make sure that all of the existing regulations in place for all the other zoning districts and all the other uses are included in this section. So, you know, making sure that all the setbacks, the heights, the, the pedestrian connections, the sidewalks, all of those other components are addressed within these regulations. So we have a comprehensive set of proposed zoning provisions to hand over and incorporate. And again, where can we incorporate green and sustainable building practices? Stormwater management, site design, what have you. Also, we need to look at the permitted uses section. It needs to be updated a wee bit. They've got some old uses that I don't think we're gonna find too frequently anymore, and we gotta include the more modern components, too. One thing that, that one of the task force members brought up was perhaps using categories of use based on, I can't remember what reference they used, but there was a great federal guidance on categories of use, similar to the NAIC codes, the NAIC codes in a way, in that they're all encompassing but explicit as well. So anyway, that's something that we're gonna look at. Can we category, can we use categories without defining every single detailed use that we can think of? Does that give us the flexibility that we want for the planning commission to allow things or prohibit things? It's something that we're gonna get into. And we're gonna look at expansion of the Tier One commercial districts to allow perhaps greater density for residential. And then we come back to you guys. We need to get your thoughts on all of these tenants and make sure that there is nothing that you are fundamentally opposed to. If there are things that you are really supportive of, we'd love to hear that as well. If there are any specifics that you can offer at this stage, we'd love to hear it as well. Anything you got, we'll take it. Even if it's smart remarks and, Nick, that was still too long, I'll take it. I made it through in what, seven minutes or so? That's a record for me.
I have a comment that I raised in our meetings, and I think you know what it's gonna be. This is all wonderful.
Big picture.
Very esoteric.
Yes.
I don't think it's practical at all for our city to expect developers to develop properties with affordable housing atop it. Because the return on their investment is not sufficient. So, and then that, along with the challenge that the, the coin of the realm, so to speak, I don't know what the coin of the realm is. We can't do tax abatements because there's no tax to speak of. And so I wonder if beyond making us feel good, and the way you present is very soothing to me, you know, if there's a real purpose for this, and I also know, again, that there's some parallel efforts on behalf of the city that I'd like to hear about, but like we have some, you know, there was one bullet about incremental changes to the code. I mean, we have, we need to put some Band-Aids on some things like quick without like spend a lot, you know, I don't mean to say I don't think about them, but they're, like, we have a height issue, we have setback issues, so it wouldn't tackle any of these greater CDP things, but they need to happen like yesterday?
I absolutely agree with you. I, I think the, there are a lot of opportunities to improve the effort to encourage and incentivize affordable housing that go way beyond Chapter 270.
Right.
And this is something that I, I have brought up in the task force is that this needs to be a citywide effort if we really wanna encourage and have this work. Go ahead, Julie.
I was just going to say, I, my background is from Montgomery County, Maryland.
Okay, yeah.
Where planning and zoning is a blood sport.
Yes.
But one of the major concerns in Montgomery County with the zoning code, which I, was on the panel that re, completely revised it about 10 years ago, is affordable housing. And it's part of the zoning code, it's an integral part of the zoning code, that you incentivize development. It's not, it's not the end of the discussion, and you're right, there's lots of things that the city could do that other jurisdictions do. But the jurisdictions that are genuinely concerned about affordable housing build into their zoning code incentives, whether it's height, density, uses, I mean, just a whole panoply of incentives to developers to address exactly what Susan has raised, because leave it, and I don't, I don't mean this by way of criticism, but no developer will ever provide affordable housing when market rate housing is permitted as a matter of right.
Absolutely.
I mean, it's just, you know, not something that anybody is going to do. It's not profitable, they have shareholders, they have other interests. And so I don't, didn't see in this presentation anything, you, you did mention incentivizing certain kinds of maybe environmental improvements, green roofs, solar panels, et cetera. But affordable housing is generally addressed in zoning codes with density, height, and other bonuses that would otherwise not be available.
I hundred percent agree with you, and unfortunately, we are, the, the reality of Rehoboth is that you have a very expensive area here, and there's a lot of people who will pay the money to live here. And that's a, a good thing to a degree, but at the same time, it's a, a double-edged sword because then you are excluding people. And it's a very complex situation that can't just be addressed by the zoning. Yes, you're absolutely right, you can put mandatory requirements for inclusion into it, but I got the sense from the task force that that perhaps was not a direct path that they wanted to pursue in the, the mandate. Susan, please correct me if I'm misunderstanding the, the, the feel, the temperature of the task force, but I didn't get the sense that the, the hard mandate of they shall incorporate X percent of the units as affordable housing was really a path that they wanted to go. And perhaps I'm getting a bit ahead of myself.
But that's not what I'm talking about.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'm not talking about mandates, and I thought I made that clear.
No, I'm, please.
These are incentives, development incentives. It's where you get in bonus.
Yes.
Density bonuses, height bonuses, and so forth.
I misunderstood.
Montgomery County does have mandates, but for developments that exceed 20 units. That will never happen in the city of Rehoboth Beach.
I'm sorry.
So the only thing, as a practical matter, you're going to be able to do is, if you're gonna go forward with this, is to put those sorts of incentives for the development community. Even then, I suspect they would much rather have market rate housing within the code provisions. And I agree with Susan, this, with all due respect, could be a monumental waste of time if you are concerned about make, that an important component and goal of this is to provide affordable workforce housing.
Yeah, I, I, I did, I, perhaps in my haste to move through this quickly, I didn't fully emphasize the focus on incentivizing. We will be looking at FAR bonuses, increased or reduced parking requirements, whatever we have the capability of addressing within the purview of 270 to incentivize that inclusion, we're going to examine it, provided that it has the support of the members and of the commission and of the Board of Commissioners as well, of course. So, yes, absolutely, incentivization is a fundamental aspect and focus of our, our work, and my apologies, my apologies if I did not emphasize that sufficiently.
I don't wanna keep this going too long, but I do wanna just underscore the need, I think, to deliver refinements soon where refinements are needed. You know, we looked at code changes, I think, when I first came on in the commission, that was, I think we're almost three years now, you know, trying to deal with this issue. So I would really encourage some focus to be given to where some very sound, needed changes can be made in the short term.
And I think that sort of dovetails with the overarching goal of revising the zoning regulations in that perhaps we need to better coordinate or integrate the, the mixed use component with the overarching revisions. Maybe that would extend the schedule and not provide updates as quickly as you'd like, but it would be perhaps more comprehensive.
Corey, what's the city doing with this? Because I know we have a task force member here, you're on the task force.
So on the Board of Commissioners' June 9th workshop, I'm gonna be presenting a Gantt chart that lays out, it's going to mostly go by chapters as they relate to building and licensing, planning, development, zoning. And the first, I've been very open about this, I'd like, I can put it out here, if, if we were going to prioritize what code changes we need to make, I would say, let's look back at the last either 10 years or 10 lawsuits that the city has had that has cost us money or time, and we start there to get with them, we go, if those were, if those came about because of codes, then let's go after those first.
Yay.
You get the most return on investment. I'm not interested in going after small game with changing the definition of a chimney. I, I don't, I, we will get there, but for the return on investment, that's what I wanna start with first. And I think with 236, with your help, that's why we have it on the June 26th meeting, that's really just there to get all the ideas that you have put forward. I wanna get the most, make sure I have the most recent iteration. Wallace Montgomery has suggested changes for different aspects of 236. I wanna get everything on a table, share it with you to make sure that I'm working with at least the most up to date, and then the city can get started on working with you to figure out some ways that we can, we can modify that chapter, along with some issues with the Board of Adjustment, I think, that could go in tandem with their expiration dates and other fees and stuff that we can work in there. Chapter 270 is a, it's a different animal. It requires public comment, so nothing about that is going to be short. I did basements, it took two and a half years.
Yeah.
And so some of these things like lot coverages, how we define natural area, setbacks, elevations, could be drawn out as well.
Glad you're willing to start another process like that.
Any, any, yes, anything that we can do that doesn't involve Chapter 270, I estimate a reasonable timeframe, four to six months turnaround between getting started from scratch or looking at it, developing recommendations, putting it forth at a workshop, maybe a second workshop, reaching out to the Rehoboth Beach HOA, other members of the community, getting some input, then going to a regular meeting. It's gonna take between four to six months to get a given chapter through that's not zoning. Zoning is, it's anyone's game. It could be six months, it could be two years to do. And so I wanna be aware of that, so if it's gonna take that much time for our return on investment, if we're gonna work in code revisions, we need to make sure we're saving the city time and money, and that's where we'll start with first. So I have an idea of the chapters. Zoning will be broken up by articles. Use regulations is one of them. Board of Adjustment is in Chapter 270, so that may be something that we'll look at a little bit down the line, but that's essentially what I plan on bringing to the commissioners and then telling, asking them, this is what we would recommend, but if you want us to switch or, or, you know, move anything, then we can do that. But that's gonna be the start of this, I imagine, three to five years for it to actually get a comprehensive look and the way it takes, the time it takes to move forward.
And that's sort of typical from my experience, that, that type of timeframe, three to five years, it would be what I would expect for a fairly significant code update.
Yeah, the, the majority of next year, I'm gonna be planning on bringing us up to the 2027 I codes.
And that's not.
And that's gonna be a significant uphill to, to move forward with that.
Nick, you mentioned, because I know we're, we're running over our time here, you mentioned needing feedback by June 16th. Are you, are, are you looking for individual feedback, I gather, from each of us as opposed to any group discussion, which wouldn't happen again until, you know?
I guess that, yes, I didn't think through that, but yes, individual would be fine with me, if it's fine with you, I'll take whatever I can get, whatever you're agreeable to.
Right, Bill? I mean, as long as we don't copy others, we can, we can provide individual feedback to him.
I mean, feedback on what document?
On, on the, the, yes, the, there's that and a, a Word document as well available online.
And then you mentioned that you're presenting it to the commissioners. Is the deadline of June 16th because you're presenting it on the 20th, or are you presenting it at the July workshop?
I'm sorry, I don't have that, July 20th, yes, I believe, June.
June 20th is when you're presenting it, at the June regular meeting?
I wrote down the wrong date. I'm sorry, I told you the wrong date. I have the 16th, I need to get them the documents so that Ann can post them on the 16th. I need your comments by the 9th, I apologize. I, I read the wrong date off of my notes here.
But you're presenting it at their meeting on June 20th.
Correct, yes.
Not at the workshop in July, but at the regular meeting on June 20th.
Correct, yes.
Less than a month, yeah, okay.
Yes, my apologies.
Just checking.
I, I, I had, I read the first date that I had on my notes and not the correct one.
Right, okay.
How do you envision that your work coordinates or doesn't with Corey's? Because I don't wanna waste task force members' time, and I, so have you, do we know how that works?
Corey and I are working on that together, yes. So we, both of us absolutely agree, and speaking to Evan Miller earlier, I believe he and Taylor Teddy are on the same page as us in that we don't want to waste time or money and make sure that everybody's on the same page with our efforts. So the amount of coordination, however much coordination that requires, we will make it happen to ensure that that is the outcome.
We may get a bit more feedback, too, when I bring the Gantt chart up at the June 9th workshop.
We're still just in the early stages of, well, both efforts, but we're, mixed use is a little bit ahead of the, the rest, but not much, so, yeah.
I was just gonna say, I appreciate both your efforts, and I think they will coalesce, and it's interesting that for at least the 13 years that I've been on the planning commission, the commissioners have talked about, you know, we really need to revisit the code, and then nobody puts up the money or does anything because you can't cut a ribbon with regard, hey, here's the new code.
It, it's not a sexy process to do. It's not a sexy outcome.
But what's interesting, and I'm so glad that you guys are pursuing this, is that other municipalities not within the state of Delaware other municipalities, not within the state of Delaware that have an ocean as a border, are 20 to 30 years ahead of us in doing exactly this. They've already done it, they've already achieved it, it works, and we're sitting here, and we haven't done a damn thing. And that's just history, because it's not sexy to do it, but it's critically, critically necessary going forward because of the way societal changes. And the idea of keeping the sense of place is a critical element of how you achieve that. We don't want to be Atlantic City, and even though some people try to do that. And that's what's so crucial, and it makes, it makes the planning commission's job much easier if you have clear and unambiguous code as you, we've just, well, I'm not going to go into it.
All of it.
We've seen where weird things happen that are inappropriate, but they do.
You should have a ribbon cutting for a new code.
Right? I agree.
Nobody will attend.
I'm just curious if you've identified different pathways or objectives for workforce housing as opposed to affordable housing? Because those are really two, they're different things, they overlap, but they're two different buckets. And I have a lot of skepticism about affordable housing within the square mile, but I am curious about whether there are specific, concrete things that could be done to help alleviate the problem of workforce housing. And, and I just wonder if that's, that's something that's been discussed.
So the short answer is, yes, there are some concrete things we can do. I'm not going to dive into a lot of the details right now due to the time, but there are limits to what we can achieve within 270. And I really think that, as I hinted at before, the city needs to consider all of its potential pathways in order to do something about it. They need to look at rental fees and taxes and all sources of financial and regulatory components to address the issue.
I just want to say, and I don't want to prolong this, but there are, and I'm sure you're familiar with them, Nick, given your experience nationwide, but there are standard income-level definitions and so forth that distinguish between affordable housing versus workforce housing. And it's usually a function of a percentage of the mean income for a four-member family or individuals or whatever, but, but they're pretty standard definitions that are pretty universally recognized when they are different, and I agree that, I think we should, I would hope you would look at both.
Oh, absolutely.
But that workforce housing is probably more realistic.
That's why I want to try and focus on housing option and not exclusively use affordable versus workforce, one or the other. So housing options also includes perhaps aging-in-place homes, different combinations of facilities, all the different things that you can imagine that may be needed within the city. So there's a number of permutations, and it's going to be reflective of the desires of the task force and this commission, Board of Commissioners, and theoretically, the public as well. So that's our goal, just a small goal. Any questions? Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Nick.
We're adjourned.